I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I just want to let everyone know, in case you're here, Item G on the Agenda on the Community Development is going to be Kevin next month.
Should be at your second March meeting on the 23rd.
So that will be off the agenda. And then also, Item E under Caucus and Public Works is going to go first on the Agenda, Bill and over West Stone Building. Before we get to public participation, John Nagel.
I would like to address the resolution that the Board of Commissioners approved at the last meeting. First, I completely agree with the position they took, and had I been here, the vote would have been seven zero. My colleagues have asked me to apologize again for my intemperate comment. I have no reluctance to do that. I hereby offer my heartfelt apology to this board, to our staff, and to everyone in this room, including Mr. Sherry, and to every resident of the township for making that intemperate comment. I ask you to forgive me. I lost my temper, and I was wrong. But I also ask you to consider the actual infraction without all the hyperbole as followed. I did not lie. I did not steal. I did not cheat. I did not breach the public trust. I lost my temper. My outburst was made out of frustration, not out of anger. Frustration because I care very much about our community. I would go so far as to say I love Radnor Township. I have 25 years of public service to our community, and that demonstrates the degree of commitment I have to this township. I have spent thousands of hours. I have lost billing time when I was doing consulting in order to attend meetings. I was appointed to the Parks and Rec Board back when Jim Higgins was doing his first stint as a Commissioner, and I served on that for 13 years. I was the Chair for three years. During the time I was on there, we had a lot of very positive things occur. Probably the single biggest, of course, is the Radnor Trail, and I was the Chair during the hearings for the trail. We also purchased the Forbes Track open space and then did the installation of the two rectangular fields and the walking trails. We nowadays refer to that to DITMAR. Folks don't know what that is. We also completed the Parks and Rec Long Range Plan, and we established the Shade Tree Commission, and I was the principal author of that ordinance. Another effort I led back then was to change over from chemical treatments to the organic treatment program that we use to this day on our playing fields. The program's still in force, and we do occasionally, it comes up, and we discuss it again specifically with the use of spot treatment. I also served as the first Chair of the EAC when it was created. The EAC did a lot of good work, got the EAC established. It has done a lot of positive things. One of the things that occurred during my time on the EAC was the setting up of the leaf mulch distribution program, where we have returned thousands of dollars of quality compost and leaf material to our residents. I've also served outside of the township. I was one of the initial Board members of the Radnor Conservancy. I served on the Board of Directors. I served as Treasurer and briefly as Executive Director. Further, I served on the Pastoral Council at my church and on the Parish School Board when my daughter was a student there. I've written, co-written grant applications that have brought over $300,000 to our community. And during my tenure on this Board of Commissioners, we have been very successful. We've returned the township to solid financial ground. We've restored professional management of the township. We established the much-needed Independent Financial Advisory Board. We've added 71 acres of open space of Ardrossen, which gives us 200-acre park over there in probably one of the most iconic places in Radnor Township, the place people identify as Radnor. So as you can see, I really have put my energy into helping to make Radnor a great place to live. And this is because, as I previously stated, I really love our community. I'll wrap up again by once again offering my most sincere apologies to the board and the citizens of Radnor Township, and I would ask all of you for forgiveness for my transgressions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to public participation.
Good evening. My name's Charlie Falcone. I live in the 5th Ward of Radnor Township, and John Nagel is my Commissioner. Over the years, John and I have worked together on many projects in our church. Politically, John and I have not always been on the same page, but at no time did I ever question his loyalty and dedication to the township. I think every so often, we want to go outside and just yell, but there's no door for us to go out. So we say something that we may regret, but then we wish we could take it back, but unfortunately, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. I believe it would be unfair to judge John on his one unfortunate incident. That's really all I have to say about John, but I would like to say one other thing if possible. I think that this year, the employees that took care of our streets in this winter did a really exceptional job. They kept them snow and ice free, as well as safe for everybody, especially the last one where they dealt with ice, then rain, then ice, then snow. I just thought somebody should kind of say thank you to them, because I'm sure they only hear bad news. Thank you for your time.
We'll clap for them.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. I'm going to refrain tonight from talking about the genuineness of Mr. Nagel's apology due to the fact that I'm going to be getting some documentation tomorrow in the mail regarding some conduct by Mr. Nagel that will be brought up at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. So for all those tuning in, stay tuned. This story continues. But now I'd like to have a brief discussion about something that occurred during this ethics investigation of John Nagel, I think was a real shame. In the response to the ethics complaint, Mr. Nagel's attorney filed 48 hours before the Ethics Board meeting, a multi-page letter that contained within it some very significant accusations. They were as follows. Quote, "We imagine Mr. Sherry gleeful when he tried to file criminal charges against Commissioner Nagel." Everyone on this board has seen Mr. Morris's letter. Second page of Mr. Morris's letter, quote, "Mr. Sherry next filed a criminal complaint against Commissioner Nagel for his comment with the Radnor Police Department, which was promptly ignored." Again, silly. As a result of those assertions made by Mr. Morris, I immediately reached out to the Radnor Township Police Department and wanted to get their official position on those two accusations made by Mr. Morris, who, I will state, stood by it. Stood by it at the Ethics Board meeting. Stood by those assertions. I wasn't able to get official responses in time for the meeting, but I've been told by the township manager that the superintendent now has the ability and has been authorized to answer four very specific inquiries, and they are as follows. Number one, whether I, Daniel Sherry, attempted to file criminal charges against Commissioner Nagel with the Radnor Police Department as expressly represented by Mr. Nagel's counsel, Neil Morris, on Page One of his February 17 correspondence to the Ethics Board. I would ask that the township manager have the superintendent answer that question.
I'm sorry, you're directing the board. You're talking to the board, not to the manager.
Would the board please have the superintendent answer this question, which I have been waiting for since mid-February?
You can get him the information, right? It's all information we can get him. So if he gives us the questions, we will get him the information, correct? It doesn't mean that we have to get him the information now. That's the position you're taking tonight at public comment?
Whoa, 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 excuse me.
Hold on, Mr. Sherry, please.
Superintendent can hand him the information.
But hold on a second. I think it's the board's position, correct? That's where you're going, John Fisher, that we will just take the information, take the questions, and then we will get that information in a timely manner?
No, no, no. Here's my position.
Well, that's just the position of public comment. The point is, residents can come in here with questions. We don't know what those questions are. We can't possibly have the answers to those questions at the time of the meeting. But we will certainly make sure that those questions are heard and that they're responded.
They have been answered. They are prepared. They are in written format by the superintendent. I would like to go over and retrieve them now from the superintendent. I would like to retrieve them right now from the superintendent and read them into the record. This is particularly important because at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, there was an inquiry about whether or not the township was obligated to pay Mr. Morris for his representation of Mr. Nagel. I don't know one way or the other whether the township is authorized to do that, has discretion to do that, but I would say that if there is at least that debate going on, this board should hear right now whether or not the Radnor Township Police Department finds express representations by Neil Morris to be factually inaccurate. This has been requested for multiple weeks. It is prepared. It ought not be pushed to another meeting. It is in written format. I would like these four answers read aloud. I will either do it myself, or the superintendent can read it. He has a microphone right in front of him. He has told me he is willing to do so.
I would ask that if that is the case, that we go ahead and read them.
Thank you. The first question again, for the record, whether I, Daniel Sherry, attempted to file criminal charges against Commissioner Nagel with the Radnor Police Department as expressly represented by Neil Morris on Page One of his February 17, 2015 correspondence to the Ethics Board.
Hold on, guys. Can I just say something? While I appreciate the need for this to get done, this is not even on the agenda. And the fact that we're all of a sudden turning this into some kind of a hearing or discussion, this is public comment. Mr. Sherry, if you want to come back, if you want to get the letter at the end of the meeting, come back and read those answers into public.
He's going to come back next meeting. He's already said, stay tuned.
Well, even at the end of the meeting, he can come back and speak again.
Mr. Rudolph can address the issue.
If it's the wish of the board, the questions are on the record. We can provide answers within the next week before you meet again.
I have to announce my rather significant displeasure with that. These answers, as I understand it, have been available for weeks. Let me tell you right now the public consensus, just so you all know. There are people in Radnor Township that believe, thanks to Neil Morris, that the Radnor Township Police Department received from me criminal charges and also ignored a criminal complaint. Do you understand, Commissioner Curly, how damaging that is for people in Radnor Township to believe that the Radnor Township Police Department, whose behavior I found to be exemplary, are ignoring criminal complaints? And how important it is to timely rectify that by having the Radnor Township Police Department answer these incredibly four simple inquiries? It's a lengthy question, but this has now gone on for a lengthy time period. This was first requested, first requested, mind you, back on February 18. It's now March 9. It continues to fester because the superintendent, who has prepared the answers, is not apparently right now allowed to read them. If that's going to be the position of people like Bill Spingler on this board, after I step down from the lectern at the start of the meeting, I'll go over and get the responses and read them at the end of the meeting. It's ridiculous, but if that's what's necessary, I guess I'll have to do that. But I have to tell you, the idea that this is somehow inappropriate, it's not on the agenda, John Nagel's apology, which incidentally was 75% a campaign speech, I dare say, that's not on the agenda either. So do assert that this is somehow completely out of the blue is inappropriate. This board knows, or should know, that representations about the performance of the Radnor Township Police Department must be timely addressed, putting apart my professional reputation. When that was done in front of the Ethics Board, it was to gain a tactical advantage. That Ethics Board was led to believe that the Radnor Township, to the extent they took Mr. Morris at his word, looked into this as a criminal matter, looked at it from a criminal complaint perspective, and, to use Mr. Morris's verbiage, ignored it.
Mr. Sherry, we have no control over counsel for someone.
It's not about counsel. I'm not asking you to have control over Neil Morris. What I'm asking you to do is please authorize the superintendent now to answer these four questions. They should probably take no more than one word.
Mr. Sherry, rather than waiting a week, tomorrow you will get in writing answers to your questions.
This is what that will cause, that approach. Answers tomorrow. That means that there will be a good 13 days before the next Board of Commissioners meeting where the public will hear this issue. During the entire timeframe, having the belief pursuant to Neil Morris that a criminal complaint was ignored. It's outrageous. It has been requested forever.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Your question's been answered, and your time is up. We appreciate it. Thank you.
My question has not been answered.
The answer is you're going to get it tomorrow. That's the answer from our.
I'm not familiar also with the gentleman who indicated that I'm going to get something tomorrow. Could I have the name of the individual and what his role is in Radnor Township? It's not, let me finish, please, Commissioner Spingler. It does not appear to be John Rice, who is the Solicitor to Radnor Township. I guess I'll direct that to the board. Who is the person that would say that I would receive it tomorrow?
It's Joe Rudolph.
My opinion is that when people come up and they ask us questions at public comment, we will get them information in a timely manner, but in my. Please, Mr. Sherry, you asked me a question, and you've been adamant before that there should be responses to questions.
Here are the responses.
Excuse me. You asked me a question, and I'm answering it. Okay? So my opinion is that you ask questions, that we then gather that information, and we get it back to you. And I don't think we have an obligation to get answers to specific questions during public comment. I also think it would be imprudent for us to give answers on many matters, situations like this during public comment. For what it's worth, there was an editorial in the Inquirer today about this exact situation that's happening in, and I believe, Yveschem, New Jersey. And the editorial board concluded that the Yveschem policy of accepting questions and then returning the information is an appropriate policy. That's the editorial board of the Inquirer. So in my opinion, that's the policy that we should be proceeding here. I don't know if others feel differently. I believe it was consistent with what John Fisher said a moment ago.
Here's the response from the Radnor Township Police Department regarding the criminal complaint. At no time did Mr. Sherry file a criminal complaint against Commissioner Nagel. Mr. Sherry did request Radnor Police look into this matter and required a police report to be generated and statements obtained from the involved parties. In Mr. Sherry's statement, he records the following in his own handwriting. "I am inclined to believe it was an emotional outburst, and my wife has indicated that if Commissioner Nagel states it to be no more than that, this will conclude our interest in the Radnor Police investigating this matter." False statements by Neil Morris in his letter. Now again, I don't know if this board has the discretion to deny a request for reimbursement. Obviously, I'm an interested party. I would advise you to rely on your advice from counsel in that regard, but to the extent you have discretion, you should consider that type of false representation being made. Additionally, if you have no discretion, you must reimburse Mr. Morris for his defense of apparently the very apologetic Mr. Nagel. There's certainly nothing that prevents you from attaching to the check that you cut to him, an assertion from this board that making false representations in defense of Commissioners is completely at odds with what this Board of Commissioners expects.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. We have public comment later. We can go over this later. You said you were going to bring it up at the end. This public comment is for people that can't stay for the meeting, and you've abused it over and over and over again.
Are you finished?
Because you stay at the meetings, I'm going to have to cut off public comment for anyone in the beginning that's going to be here toward the whole meeting.
Actually, that's actually something that was part of the proposed resolution that was pulled back. I don't know if you were keeping track, but you lost that last week. That actually never came to a vote. I'm allowed to speak at the beginning and at the end because that resolution never went to a vote. You understand that, I hope?
No, I don't understand that because.
That's fair. That's fair that you don't understand it.
Quite plain over the years by Lane Schaefer what our rule is.
I don't even know what that was in response. But I will be back. I will be back at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And discuss a little bit more about the Ethics Board determination. I'll just leave by stating that it appears that the Planning Commission made a recommendation regarding Biomed tonight. I would just note that making recommendations is what advisory boards are supposed to do. When I come back and talk to you tonight, I'll draw a contrast between what Planning Commission did and what the Ethics Board did, and also a very interesting correspondence generated by Solicitor Rice as to what the Ethics Board, which according to Solicitor Rice is not a judge, not a court, not a prosecution, not even a quasi-judicial proceeding, believes applies to Commissioners in Radnor Township. I think you'll find it's rather shocking and unprecedented. We'll talk about that at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
For those of you who don't know me, my name's George Beatty, and I live at 238 Shimoney Road. I'm also the Chair of the Radnor Democratic Committee, and I want to briefly comment on the tenor of things at our Commissioners meeting. That was a great example of the problem that we are having now consistently. We've been fortunate in Radnor in having smart, qualified people step forward and donate their time for the public good to serve as Commissioner. These posts that you folks serve on, they don't provide compensation. It's token compensation. The reward is the satisfaction that you all get for doing something good for our community. And I want to thank each and every one of you, all seven of you, Republicans and Democrats, for the job you do. But the level of cynicism runs high because you're elected officials, so people are wary of possible corruption. But I know there's no corruption here. The problem is that over the last year or more, I've seen the same people, every time, come up here and make constant attacks, constant attacks against mostly three of our Commissioners. Unfortunately, our local newspaper has not critically analyzed these attacks. Instead, they just put them on the front page and repeat them verbatim. This provides an illusion, an illusion of legitimacy of these attacks. The attacks aren't legitimate, and the newspaper shouldn't just publish them without some critical analysis. It unfairly damages the reputations of good people and their families. And because it's not happening to you this week, you better watch out. It could happen to you next time because it's not the right way to run this township. It makes it much more difficult to recruit qualified, caring people to run for public office, to put themselves out there because they're always being attacked. Gotcha, gotcha. I'm sick of it. I watch these meetings on television. I don't come here usually because I like to watch it on TV, and I'm sick of every little thing being picked on. Gotcha. What we have in Radnor is not a problem of corrupt elected officials. We don't have corrupt elected officials. We have bullies in Radnor Township. We have a bullying problem in this room, and this erodes democracy. When you scare people away from public service because they're afraid they're going to go "gotcha, gotcha" every time, "I got paragraph 62, 5.6A4, and I gotcha this time," you know, people just say, "I don't want to be bothered," and they don't want to get involved. And that hurts everybody. So we have a bullying problem. We have a problem when somebody, one of you, don't vote the way that the bully wants you to vote, then they're going to come after you. They're going to find an excuse to file an ethics charge or something else. It doesn't matter that the ethics charge gets thrown out because they know that our newspaper will put it on the front page and will say, "Oh, ethics charges, ethics charges." The bullies will stand up at these meetings, and they'll demonize you. They might not demonize you yet, but it'll come if you don't agree with them someday. And if they can get under your skin enough, if they can get you upset enough that you lose your cool like John Nagel did, then gotcha. We gotcha again, and we'll file another ethics charge, and we'll go on and on and on. Good people who would make excellent public officials, tell me, they won't want to be bothered with this. They don't want to get involved with this. They don't want to be the target of this jihad of gotcha. It's getting to the point where nothing is important because everything is of such vast importance, and it loses its effectiveness. For months last year in 2014, these meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting, we heard, "Bill Spingler, an ethics complaint, Bill Spingler, ethics complaint," front page almost every week. I was sick of it because each week, wait, this week, we amended the complaint to add a semicolon in paragraph three. So then the newspaper would repeat the entire charge again with sinister, astounding overtones and a narrative that made it sound corrupt. It was not corrupt. It was a difference of opinion, a legitimate difference of opinion. Mr. Spingler's been cleared, but his reputation was dragged through the mud for months on the front page of this newspaper. It makes me sick to see this happening to good people who care about our township. Then for months more in 2014, Commissioner Jim Higgins, another excellent human being, a fantastic person with a strong sense of integrity and honesty. The problem in that case, it's ironic tonight, we're talking about criminal charges because for weeks on the front page, they talked about criminal charges were filed against Commissioner Higgins. Well, guess what? That wasn't true. Criminal charges were never filed against Commissioner Higgins. A private criminal complaint, a private person filed, who disagreed with Commissioner Higgins, filed a private complaint against him. But remember, only the government prosecutor is allowed to lodge formal criminal charges. So a private complaint does not become criminal charges, criminal charges, until the DA or the US Attorney says so. Criminal charges were never filed against Jim Higgins, but at these meetings, bullies got up here and they said, "There were criminal charges against Commissioner Higgins, and they were kept secret by him behind closed doors in a sinister, astounding way." I sat at home, and it sickened me to see my friend and a person all of us know who's honest and decent, and everybody on this board knows that Jim Higgins is an honest, decent man. He was attacked in that way. Criminal charges were kept secret. There were never any criminal charges. It's ironic tonight, we're talking about criminal charges again.
George, we're going to try and wrap up.
I'll wrap up quickly. Damages to the reputations of good men, good representatives, are wrong. As Chair of the Radnor Democratic Committee, it's my job, a no-paying job, to help recruit people, to get people involved in public service. People are sick of this jihad of gotcha, and I'm sick of it too. The three of you, John, Jim, Bill, and the rest of you as well, I want to thank you for your service. I want to let you know that if you do something that I don't agree with, I'll get up here and I'll talk about it in a civil way, and I'm not going to look for some other angle to say, "Gotcha. I got this, and I got you, and I got that." You know what? It's got to stop. In the end, in the end, when good people just stop getting involved, that's bad for democracy. So I want to thank you for standing up to the jihad of gotcha. Keep up the good work. And for those of you who are trying to help the gotcha along, in the long run, it's not a good thing. It's bad for our community. Thank you for all your hard work.
Any other public comment? I'd like to announce that we had an executive session preceding this meeting, and we discussed personnel matters, litigation matters, and real estate matters. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm if we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any Commissioner want to take any item off?
Item I, correct.
Correct. Item I.
Item I? Any other? Any member of the public want to take any item off the consent agenda? All those approve of the consent agenda without item I, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven to zero. Can I have a motion to approve resolution 2015-09?
So moved.
I'd like to move this under Finance and Audit, just to give Bill. I just gave Bill White a note concerning this. I want to give him a chance to review that, and I think if we delay it, it'll give him a chance to review that information unless you feel that we need to do it now. Bill, would you rather wait? You want to do it now?
We're ready to discuss it now.
You ready? Okay.
All right, did I have a motion to approve the resolution?
And I'll second it.
Motion second? Okay. All right, Commissioner, comment?
Okay. I, just real quickly, this is a, we're basically renegotiating an agreement with Veritax to be our outside tax auditor, and we've had a relationship with this group for quite some time, and they've done a great job for us in collecting our tax revenues. In fact, they've increased, on average, our tax collections from $4 million a year to just over $10 million a year in less than 15 years. So this is a pretty significant performance level. And since that time, we haven't increased their income, their pay rate. So administration is asking us to reconsider that compensation level, and they presented us an ordinance that would, or I'm sorry, a resolution that would allow for a fixed rate of pay of $160 per hour, and then also a compensation structure that in rate of pay of $160 per hour, and then also a compensation structure that incentivizes increased collections and audits. What I'm going to recommend is the current incentive compensation structure has a stepped approach. I won't go through the whole table. It's in our packets. It's on the table in the rear. But in essence, we have a stepped rate from zero to a half a million dollars of audits and found money. There's a 0% compensation, so there's no additional compensation. But from that point on, it's 20%, and then it drops down to 15% and 10%. What I'll recommend is that we go to a flat compensation rate of 10%. But I will want to hear from staff, because this was something that Carfac looked over and that staff looked over. There may be a reason to have this step change in the rate that I'm not seeing. But in general, I think it would be best just to have a simple, flat incentive rate for anything over a half a million dollars of collections. In that way, we don't really segment off some range of collection rate that we want. We want it just them to work harder and harder and do as best they can. But I would like to hear from staff on this. Bill, if you want to comment on this.
Sure. Well, what I'll do is, I'll just kind of tee it up, and then Bob Tate, our Assistant Finance Director and the person who directly oversees the Act 511 program, can go into as much detail as the Board requests. But just backing up to some of the high-level summaries that Commissioner Fisher, you touched on a moment ago, I just want to make sure that it's clear that, at the front part of the summary that was provided to the Board, those total amounts, that's the total amount of revenue generated by the business privilege and the mercantile tax. That's not the amount of audit revenue. The audit piece is significantly smaller. But the purpose of including that in the summary was to get a sense of how critical this component of the township's resources is to continuing to provide service. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tate, who can touch on the contract in general, as well as why the scale was negotiated the way it was.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. White. We have vetted this process with Carfac, and this has been thoroughly analyzed. And I guess first was the, just the incentive concept was first addressed and reviewed with Carfac, and it was endorsed. And for the most part, there was agreement that this would be a good way to go. In terms of how we developed the percentages and the ranges, we did take a historical look, and some years, the threshold was exceeded, and some years it was not. And over about a, over a 10-year period, 12-year period, applying these percentage amounts to those, I guess, compensable levels, averaging it out over time, it was about an hourly rate of about 235, which we feel is actually competitive, given where Mr. Barrett's current rate is and has been for 10 years. So the idea of having a base amount at zero is really that, so that there's a certain threshold that has to be reached. So once that's reached, we all win. The township wins, and we feel that Mr. Barrett's efforts and his skill and expertise in this area would warrant this type of compensation range.
What about the factor of, I haven't heard the factor of trying to retain this firm, that there's a potential that we wouldn't be able to retain this firm. How's that figure into it?
Well, I know that this firm is one of the leading firms in the area, in this area of Act 511 tax. They've been doing this for well over 20-some years, 25 years, and there are municipalities throughout the state who are seeking this firm to engage them to help in their Act 511 collections. And I know that this firm would be immensely helpful if we had them retained here in Radnor on an ongoing basis, and they're incented to put 100% of their efforts here and continue to help our business base, again, to just simply enforce the tax ordinances uniformly and consistently and bring everyone into compliance. We've seen what it has done over the years. It's been a tremendous benefit to our budget. So we'd like to keep that valuable resource here.
So I do have a question, though. If we look at the compensation table, there's a discontinuity, and I'll explain it. If they were to perform audits and bring in an additional $1.5 million even, they would get a 20% compensation or $300,000. Is that correct?
No, it would be, it would be a 20% compensation on the excess over the half million.
Over the half million.
So it would be, the first, that first $1 million would be at 20%.
Okay, but, so, my numbers won't be right, but there is a discontinuity, I believe, or is it baked into the percentage? Because we dropped from 20% to 15%, and, you know, with $1 increase. So if you go from $1.5 million to $1.5 million and $1, the percentage drops by 5%.
Well, that, the one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so how does that work?
Again, the first $1 million would be at the 20%. The next dollar and forward would be at 15%, and then up to 2.5, and then in excess of 2.5, it drops down further to 10%.
Okay, so, you know, again, this is very complex in terms of compensation. This is, you know, what I'm typically seeing in my type of work, you know, if you're saving people money, if you're doing, it's usually a fixed rate. And when you have a stepped compensation like this, there's a lot of calculations that need to be done every year to compensate this firm. I grant that they're all simple, but the point is, what I'm concerned with is that we're giving a 20% compensation up to that first level, and that's a big chunk. That's a big chunk of change. If you look at the, for instance, if you add in the 20% of 1.5 million, that's 300,000. Is that right? Or do I have to subtract out? See, I'm already, the fact that I'm confused.
You would subtract, you would, the first 500,000 is not compensable at all.
Okay, so the first million would be 200,000 of compensation.
Correct.
Okay, so 200,000, and if we look at the average number of hours they were spending per year, which is, I believe, 600, and you add all this up, you're starting it with a base rate of 160 per hour, but now we're adding in $200,000 over 600 hours. So now the hourly rate is quite higher. And I don't have that calculation in front of me, but it's more than double. It's more than double the rate. So I'm concerned that we're starting out with this nice rate, and then we're more than doubling the rate. It's going to 300, let's assume it was 360 an hour. It's more than that, though, because they're not working 2,000 hours per year. They're working 600.
In those instances, and that, those are the rare occasions where the township has benefited by such a, you know, high level of audit revenues. We're typically not there, but in those years when we are, it does then become an incentive and really a win-win for both the township and the firm doing the work. That's not something that we expect or anticipate year over year. So I think it's, you know, that's why the budget is set conservatively. That's why the half million dollars is not compensable. The auditor is expected to reach a half million dollars each year before anything's compensable. So there, it's definitely incentive-based.
So would staff be opposed to, I think we're going to need to bring this back. I mean, I'm not comfortable with this at this point. Again, I look at this, and I say, "Why are we using stepped rates?" Unless there's a real, I understand you went back and looked at the data, and you're fitting this to the data.
John Fisher, can we get a sense of the seven to see who else, because there might be some, there might be others that agree? So Rich, do you want to? If I could, just real quick, add to Mr. Tate's comments with regard to the reasons behind the stepped approach and the example that we're using as part of this discussion. I think, and we got into this a little bit at the last time, is I think we're using an extreme example, an unusually high dollar amount example, to try to figure out how the calculation will work. If you go back through the history of the township's audit revenues, 1.5 million would be a statistical outlier on the high end. Year by year, those amounts are much lower, which is, when we did the analysis, that's where we came up to about $230 to $235 an hour, had this contract been in place going back to 2003. So that's one thing to keep in mind. The other part is, is when we discussed this with Mr. Barrett and Carfac, it was actually one of the recommendations made by Carfac that, instead of having the flat rate, that we have a regressing scale, that is to help the township if there were to be a large, one-time settlement like we had in 2013, where the auditor doesn't keep a, doesn't get the huge chunk. Instead, it is a little bit smaller amount. So just keep in mind that I think we're talking about an extreme example when the reality is going to be that this works itself out to be in the 230 per hour range. Again, that's over many, many years of average. And the second piece was that the regressing scale was suggested to help in the situation where there is a one-time large settlement, which we just had.
But why is that? So I'm still stuck on this, because if regressive scale is needed, why not just use a 10% rate through the whole range? It's built in, then. It's fixed. And that way, it's 10% whether it's a half a million or 8 million, and it's fixed. And then we all know what it is. We all know what they're getting. The concern I have with stepped rates is you could end up with manipulation, because, quite frankly, you could hold off audits one or two years, and the numbers were bigger, and then all of a sudden, you're getting 20% instead of nothing or 10%. So I'm worried about the baked-in incentive.
Except with that example, keep in mind that it's the administration. It's the township that controls when those audits are ultimately assessed and the collection that occurs thereafter, not the auditor himself.
And we also, you've pointed out in your memorandum that we have the right termination for convenience upon 60 days' notice. So if we smell something bad, John Fisher, I think we can pull out of it. I, you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to say, maybe now's the time to get a sense on the recommendation to having a fixed rate, because if that's the sense of the Board, it will have to be tabled. We'll have to go back and negotiate, make sure that the auditors.
I'm not headed in that direction, but, I mean, I'm only one person. I'd like to just get some fundamentals out here. John, you're getting real complicated, and I appreciate your engineering approach to things. We're talking here about a company that's going to be collecting from people that have not paid either their mercantile tax, their local services tax, their business privilege tax, and their amusement tax, those four Act 511 taxes. They're not, they're not, this table does not give them any right to the revenues that are being paid voluntarily by all of our taxpayers. I just want people to understand that, that this is a collection effort. This is an auditing and collection effort, rather than them getting a cut from what comes in as a matter of course.
That, in fact, is, it is strictly an auditing effort. They not only do not have access to the revenue, but they do not have any control or access to the collections. The township oversees, administers, and enforces the tax ordinances. We collect the tax, we post the tax. We control all of the administration of the tax itself.
And we do the calculation of what they've accomplished, what they've gone and audited and what they've produced for us. We do the analysis of that. We do the calculations, and then we decide what their commission is, what their compensation is.
Well, the auditor does, performs the audit and does prepare an assessment worksheet, which the township then must review and approve and authorize before it's issued. So the township has full control over who is audited, what, you know, when they're initiated and when they're assessed.
Okay.
So it is truly, and it's, the auditor is just simply doing, performing an audit function.
Yeah. Well, John Fisher, I'm inclined to go along with this. This is their recommendation. This is our professional staff. And also, we have our Carfac, the committee, that is recommending this table, these numbers. And I think we have a lot of respect for them, and they've done a wonderful job for us in other endeavors. So I'm inclined to go along with this.
Any other Commissioners have any comment?
Yes, yes, yes. I would tend to agree with Commissioner Fisher. Actually, would not recommend that there be any incentive or contingent fee compensation at all in this audit endeavor. And I know Veritax, and I know Kevin Barrett's company, and I am a tax attorney and work in the state and local area. And I know that Kevin does a good job, and he does a good job for his clients in the municipal realm. So I appreciate this professionalism. And I think his $160 an hour is appropriate, or maybe bumped up some appropriate percentage. But I would, I'm always against, in the context of public collections and auditing, against contingent fee audits. I believe that it is basically aberrant to our system of government. The point of government is not to extract the maximum amount of revenue from the constituents, and a contingent fee will invariably seek to encourage that type of a result. It basically encourages our auditors to be aggressive and harass the constituents. And I've seen it, especially in the case of small business and an unsophisticated business that really don't have the advice, experience, and knowledge to be able to go toe-to-toe with a very experienced and knowledgeable and very proficient auditor.
Any other Commissioner comment?
No, I'm not done. I'm not done. This, the, this system does not go to the goal of what government should do in the, in this realm of taxation. The government should be seeking to get the right answer. It should not be seeking to extract more or extract even in questionable or gray areas as much as it can based on the incentive for the person seeking it. Finally, the incentives will often lead to a conflict between the consultant and the principal, because in many instances, especially when there is a very large issue or a gray area, the township may wish to go a different direction than the contingent fee auditor. Contingent fee auditor will be motivated to press until the very end to maximize the benefit that they receive in their contract and will not, and potentially, and I have seen it happen, lose sight of getting to the right answer. Also, everyone here is aware, there's gray areas in Act 511 and what is actually subject to tax. So it's not a matter of people not paying their taxes. Most of the people that end up being caught by this auditor never knew that they owed any tax. Many of them could be nonprofits, small business people, people who are, just have a rental property and had no idea that they were subject to this regime. And that's one of the areas that's recently come under attack as being not applicable in the courts. So again, I want to have Mr. Barrett, and I want to have him as an auditor. I'm perfectly happy to give him his hourly rate. That puts him as an auditor. I'm perfectly happy to give him his hourly rate. That puts him squarely in our court, and we both have the same incentive. He works and gets paid for what he does, and the township will strive to get to the right answer, and to have people treated fairly and consistently.
Other commissioner comment?
Sure. I think Rich is accurate on this. I don't think you need to have a contingent fee for your professionals. We do this with doctors, lawyers, engineers, and accountants all the time. Great respect for staff and Carfac, but this is more a policy than finance. And as I see it, we should take a fixed rate on this. So, in my opinion, we take the rate that's appropriate for the service he's providing, we adjust it appropriately, and we pay him the hourly rate that's appropriate for the service that he's providing. So, that's the way I would intend to vote tonight.
Well, I gotta be honest, I don't really see the parade of horrors of this type of auditing. In my view, it is about equity, it's about fairness. This auditor goes out and finds the people who aren't paying their taxes. And it may be because they don't know, but it's unfair, because their competitor, who took the time to do the research, is paying the tax. And this is really an effort at evening the playing field. Because if one person has to pay the tax, everyone has to pay the tax. We need equity. And to me, that's what this is about, is making sure that everyone is on an even playing field. Nobody wants to pay taxes, I got that. But, it's a part of life, and if someone's gonna have to pay taxes, everyone in a like position should be paying taxes. And that is the duty of the government, to make sure that this is put out, and enforced, and it's all fair. And that is the purpose of this program, it's the purpose of auditing. And in having an incentive program to make sure that our chosen auditor is properly incentivized, I have no problem with that. Further, I want to make sure everyone understands, this auditor has no, as I understand it, has absolutely no authority over collections. They go out, they do the research, they figure out which taxpayers should be paying, they bring it to the township, and we have separate counsel for our Act 511, separate legal counsel that gives us advice as to whether that's a valid, whether they should or shouldn't be paying the tax. And that's who, in conjunction with our township, that's who makes the decision about whether we should proceed with collections. This auditing firm, all they do is they go out, they do the research, they look at the books, and they determine, should this taxpayer be paying, or shouldn't they? And if they should be, and their competitor down the street is, and they're not, that's not fair. And that's what this whole program is designed to avoid. So, I'm inclined to support it. I have to say, on this type of, I really do defer to Carfac on this type of analysis. They spent a lot of time looking at this pay structure, and they've given us some really good advice on our Act 511 program in the last two years, that we have done well by. So, I'm going to defer to them and to staff on the structure.
Any public comment?
Hi, Lesley Morgan, 12 Farm Road. I have no strong opinion for or against a commensurate increase after 10 years or 12 years. Obviously, this person works very hard. I think the number was 600 hours. The work year has 2040, so there's other municipalities that this company is working for, number one. Number two, has anybody on this board, or Carfac, done what a lot of people do, I used to do this all the time, looked around at their competitors, so that, to us, is our surrounding townships? Do they do an incentive fee structure on their auditor? I would be very curious. I'd be very curious with Lower Merion, Tridifern, and Upper Merion, they're all AAA, and you know guys, you might not like me, but I do dream that we'll get back to AAA credit rating. So, I don't mean in anything personal, but I would think that we could take a pause, and at least look, has this been done around us, very wealthy townships? So, it's very different to give an incentive to a Veritac or Mr. Barrett, who has a good reputation, to go to a really small community, let's say Mecklenburg, or something like that, that has much less revenue. You probably do have to do an incentive structure. I would just like the answers to that questions before you all decide. I think it's in everybody's best interest. Thank you.
Also, I'd say overly aggressive-
Public comment?
Overly aggressive enforcement by the government of taxation and fairness, it's not really fair. And we've seen it have really bad consequences in Long Island and others, where we had somebody killed over cigarette taxes.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Just to follow up on Commissioner Booker's comments, I thought it was very unfair from Commissioner Schaefer to construe this as whether or not we should be collecting taxes in Radnor Township. That's not the issue before this board. It's whether or not the auditor should be paid a flat rate, whether the auditor should be in a contingency fee-like structure incentivized to investigate, and perhaps pursue aggressively gray areas under the law. This township, just by way of an elementary comparison, does not, to my knowledge, financially incentivize its police officers to write tickets. That's not their role. They're supposed to be applying the law in the circumstances that present themselves. I have significant professional experience with contingency fee agreements. My practice is catastrophic personal injury on the plaintiff's side. We do contingency fee agreements. The rationale behind that is, the clients are generally horribly injured, not able to pay an hourly rate, or pay our experts, or pay the cost of litigation. I've not heard, at least from anybody on this board, any rationale why the auditor cannot be paid a flat rate to compensate him to do his job to the best of his ability, as opposed to being financially incentivized to tax the people of Radnor Township as aggressively as possible, particularly as Commissioner Booker points out, in gray areas. There are certainly ambiguities when it comes to the tax code. I'll close with one more thought. Commissioner Schaefer stated that this auditor has no real power. It's told the same thing about the Radnor Township Ethics Board, and yet, here we are, with investigations closed over, and over, and over again. So, while certain people on this board might take the position that people don't have any real power, there's a documented history in the last eight months of an advisory board that's supposed to have no power whatsoever to take dispositive action, taking dispositive action three times. So, please be careful about what you believe certain individuals have in terms of final authority. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, passes four to three. I'll go to Public Works and Engineering, and we're gonna start with item E, Final Approval of Villanova University West End Zoning Building Butler Annex.
Yes, this is before us for the third, or fourth, or fifth time, I'm not sure. But, this is final approval.
Mr. President, if I may, I think we skipped the public safety one, the ordinance, the adoption. Or, did you hit that one?
Okay, can I have a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2015-02 for handicap parking space on Ikus Avenue.
Second. Commissioner Comment, Public Comment, all those in favor, aye. Passes seven to zero.
Before we begin, I'd just like to announce that I will not participate in this discussion or vote, because I have a conflict of interest.
All right, we have the applicant with us tonight, Mr. Kowalski, to tell us where we are, what the project is. And, go ahead, please.
Well, basically, are there any outstanding issues that we haven't agreed upon?
Okay, I'll be quick. I know we've been up here a few times, but I just want to go over again what this project is. As Commissioner Hagan said, we've been here a few times talking about this. And this is a project to transform our Butler Annex, which, as you can see from the previous slide, is in the existing state, temporary structure built in 1968. It's a multipurpose athletics facility. And what we'd like to do is transform it into a facility that supports our student athletes in the way that they need to be supported, as far as physical fitness and training, things of that nature. So, again, it is replacing the Butler Annex on a slightly larger footprint, but with many more services to support our current student athletes. There'll be no increase in the number of students, student athletes, or staff as a result of this project. You could see, this is an overhead view of the current existing structure, with a white roof right here at the end of the football stadium. And here is what it would look like in a future condition. From inside the stadium, it's this blue structure right here. And again, what we're proposing, looking straight back. It will provide services that already exist now, but again, we are not able to offer in a way that we'd like to our student athletes. Strength and conditioning, physical fitness, training, training tables, things like that, that will support many of our student athletes in programs ranging from football, to everything but men's and women's basketball, who have their own facility in the Davis Center. Again, it's here, located on Lancaster Avenue, adjacent in between the Villanova Stadium and Jake Nevin Fieldhouse. It will connect to Jake Nevin Fieldhouse. And what this building will also allow us to do is to reuse some of our space that we currently use in other parts of our athletic complex. It'll be sort of a domino. And once we're able to move some of our programs into here, we'll be able to free up space used currently for other purposes, and move some of our programs there. As I mentioned at the last meeting, our world-renowned track and field and cross-country programs don't have locker rooms of their own, and we'll be able to solve that as a result of this project. There is an existing nonconformity that we're gonna maintain. This slide shows that, the outer wall, closest to Lancaster Avenue. And we talked a little bit about stormwater management last time. I'm not gonna go into the details here, Karen can go over that, but I do want to point out, I know Commissioner Fisher raised concern in the last meeting about water conveyed via a PennDOT pipe onto Pike Field. And while we're not able to address that with this project, we have a very tight budget. We did submit land development paperwork for our other project on Friday, that shows that we're gonna take that water and manage that. So, we are able to do that, not as a result of this project, but in the early stages of the next one. There were a couple of items in the Township Engineers' Review Letter that Karen is here to talk about, real quick. So, I'll ask her to come up and go through those.
Okay. There was one comment in the latest review letter, Stormwater Management, that we discussed with Roger. We have enlarged the underground system that's there now, to pick up a little bit more impervious on-site. So, we did, on the plan here, we eliminated about 600 square feet of impervious, and added a planning bed in front of the building. And we enlarged the underground here, to pick up the impervious that's right in front of the building.
Show us on the screen.
Oh, okay. Yes. If you look here, in front of the building here, in front of the building, we put a planning bed, so we decreased the impervious about 600 square feet. And then, the underground embed that sits in front here, has been enlarged to take the stormwater for the asphalt that's right in front of the building. So, it does comply with his latest review comment.
And that's all, everything-
Everything else is-
... taken care of?
Yes.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Are there, all the issues on preliminary, this is identical to preliminary, with the exception of what Karen just identified? Is that accurate?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Could you go back to the sections of the wall at the existing nonconforming use? So, can you walk through that and explain what we're looking at there?
Yes. The first section here is kind of a combination, the existing. So, right now, this is the existing footing, this is the existing concrete wall, the existing wall that comes out, and it has an overhang here, as part of the Butler Building. And then, the new wall is sitting on top of that section. So, you can see that we're gonna, we need to beef up the foundation behind that existing one, and we're gonna set the wall behind, so it doesn't go past the line of the existing wall. This overhang goes away, and this goes up a little bit higher. So, and then, these two sections are just, this is strictly the new wall, and this is strictly the existing wall. So, this is the foundation, this is the existing grade, so we're gonna keep the existing wall about two feet above the existing grade.
So, basically, you're tearing down the entire existing nonconforming structure, aren't you?
Everything behind this foundation wall, correct?
So, isn't that a new project, then? Why should you maintain the nonconforming use, when you're totally replacing the structure?
Rich, I guess you're asking legal questions, so that brings me up here. The Radnor-
I was asking, you know, I was asking the architect, but it doesn't matter. No, it's all right, go ahead.
Legal, yeah.
And you're gonna introduce yourself for the public-
Nick Camelia, representing Villanova University. 101B of the code provides that nonconforming buildings may be continued, basically, if it does not extend past the existing nonconformity, and that's what this is based on. And that's been-
What's the language, exactly?
The language says, "A nonconforming building being proposed to be used for a conforming purpose," which this is, "may continue and may be altered or enlarged if the alteration or enlargement does not increase the nonconforming building or structure with respect to setback." And it mentions a couple of the items, too. But, the important thing here, obviously, is the setback.
What does it say about, when do you have a new building?
The Radnor Code does not provide for that.
So, it's anyone's, so, do you have any opinion when an existing building is removed, and no longer, a developer can no longer avail themselves of a continuing nonconforming use? Do you have any view on that?
When a code, whether it's the Radnor Ordinance, or another ordinance, is not specific as to a particular point, it must be determined in favor of the landowner. And in this case, I think it is specific, we're not increasing the nonconforming. But even if it's not specific, and if it's ambiguous, it must be determined in favor of the landowner. That's clear, black letter zoning law in the Commonwealth.
Well, it's not ambiguous, it's, you're allowed to use a continuing, so your view is that footing right there, keeping that two feet, allows you to build a whole new structure, increasing five times the size, and go back much further than it currently is?
As long as you're not increasing the nonconformity as to setback. The only issue here, they could build a building here, the question is the nonconformity regarding the setback. And we're not increasing the nonconformity of the setback. And so, therefore, it's permitted.
Isn't this an entire new building, though?
No, it's not. The wall's being, basically, the way the law-
All that's remaining is that footer, right? So, that footing, that counts, right? So, the footing, you're saying the footing is the existing building, and that that is enough to maintain? You don't think that that's stretching what the intent of the provision is?
No, I don't.
I mean, that's how we have interpreted it, in the five years that I've been here, and the six years on Planning Commission. And it affects residential also, there's plenty of residential building permits that people look to put patios in, where that extension, and as I understand what you've explained, if, looking at this image that's on the screen, the building isn't allowed to come an inch to the right, but it's allowed to extend-
Behind that.
Into the page and out of the page.
Correct.
And that's been our traditional interpretation here in Radnor.
That's been the interpretation for, as long as I've been here.
Yes.
There's also another thing, Rich, you'll-
It's okay. In this case, I understand the point. I think that, we have another very large building plan for this developer pending right now, too, don't we? That we actually gave special zoning requirement to as well, didn't we?
Well, the CICD, I believe, that was based on an adopted ordinance.
Right.
Well, I was gonna try to help your argument a little bit. But, basically, what I was gonna talk about is massing. And that is, that our code does not address massing. So, you change the, you don't change the encroachment into the setback area, but you can change the contour, and the appearance, and the aesthetics of the building, and our code doesn't address that. And we had it, a development on Poplar Avenue, where the developer, or the builder, started out, he was gonna save the house, and gradually, he just took one piece after another down. But, he never changed the footprint, and he ended up with a much more of a mass of structure than he started with. And our code doesn't address that.
Well, again, I think that, you know, when we see here, though- Well, again, I think that, you know, when we see here those unfortunate situations that we ought to do everything that we can, and I think that reasonableness should govern and that at some point, it gets to be unreasonable to say that that building is, should be allowed to continue its nonconforming use when the entire building is removed. So, and I think that I would, I would think that this is a situation where that would be the case.
Remember, it's not the use, it's the structure.
Okay.
The structure.
The structure is being completely removed here, as we pointed out by your architect.
Is there any other commissioner--
Yeah, I just want to, I want to, I actually have questions for staff on this. So we have a Gannett Fleming letter from Roger Phillips, our engineer, dated March 3rd. Item three, under subdivision, land development, section two, item three. We, we are collecting a fee for nonresidential subdivisions or land developments. The fee is $3,307 per 4,000 square feet of building area. And the way this has been calculated, it's calculating just the increase in building area, and I'd argue that because this building, for all intents and purposes, is being raised, that we should include the entire area. So instead of the 5,339 square feet net increase of area, we should just use the 16,072 square foot area. I refer to the code, the code is somewhat ambiguous. It doesn't talk about additions, it doesn't talk about redevelopment, it just talks about building area. And since this structure is an entirely new structure, except for the footer, I think everyone in the room knows what that is. It's fine. It's the way things are done. But what I'd ask the applicant to consider is paying the full fee, which I calculated to be 13,287.53, and that's based on that $3,307 per 4,000 square foot of building area and at 16,072 square feet. And I'd like John Rice to, to give me an opinion on this if he can. If he cannot give us an opinion, that's fine, too. But that's my interpretation of our ordinance. You know, a developer comes in, they're building a structure that, that's, and the building area is X. We don't care what it was before X, it's what it is at that moment. And the fact that that original structure will be removed, I think it's only fair that they pay the full fee. So, John Rice, would you like to talk about this?
This is a caucus meeting, so the preliminary plan approval had that reduced fee. You're correct. The, the ordinance itself talks about building area, not square footage, so I think that that's where Roger's interpretation came in, definition of building area. Let me get together with Roger and Kevin in terms of that fee, because there is a substantial difference between the increase versus the actual building. And we'll talk to the applicant between now and the, this is going to come back to you for a final plan approval resolution.
Right. Yeah, I just thought it was a, you know, I, I'll be very supportive of, of the higher fee.
Well, I tend to lean that way in all cases when it addresses this, but this ordinance has a definition of building area, and it appears to be that it's a footprint. So let me, between now and two weeks from tonight, Commissioner Fisher, we'll, I'll get back to you with where we think this ought to be going.
Okay.
What's the difference in the fee again, John?
It's about $9,000 difference.
Yeah, the original fee was calculated 4,00414, and the fee that I'm, that I've calculated is 13,287.53.
Any public comment? And the, the other issue with the fee is, I'm not sure we've had nonresidential previously, so--
Precedent setting, and I think it's important that we get it right the first time.
Yeah, going forward, we've had residential, and it's a per-unit basis. This is a little bit different. So, you know, I want to give it some thought and talk with Kevin and Roger, so.
Are we good? My name is Christina Peroni, I live in Wayne. It's my understanding from the letter of March 3rd that there are two zoning waivers that they're requesting. Am I reading that right? The 255-20 and 245-22, is that right?
They're SADA waivers, subdivision ordinance waivers, modifications.
And then there's additional waivers on the next page--
Okay.
Under zoning.
So my understanding is that they're asking for some waivers of stormwater, they're asking for the nonconformity, which all I've ever heard is the exact same thing, that when you raise a building, you start over and you're not allowed to go back to the nonconforming place. Now, you guys have the power to say, no, you're not allowed to build a building a third larger in the area where it's nonconforming. That's what you've said to other developers and landowners who come in. So that's what you've said in the past. Also, I'll just remind you, and I have nothing against Villanova, but they didn't pay all the fees last time for the payments for, all we're going to need for traffic calming, this is another building, and they're saying there's not going to be any additional traffic by rate, by making the building a third bigger. In their analysis, there will be no change in traffic. Whether or not that's true or not, that these people who were, have better lockers now, it's still a building that's a third larger, and I think there should be some consideration. As well, there should be consideration for the stormwater issue. We didn't get a turning lane, we didn't get traffic and calming measures, and stormwater, they're asking for relief. So while this is just a caucus and you guys aren't going to vote on it, it seems like there are rules for Villanova, and then there are rules for the rest of the township. And the reason, you know, Mr. Beatty came in saying that people act like things are nefarious, well, if every time Villanova comes forward, they get waivers and they get things that are not afforded other people in the community, it does look bad. So I would just ask you, and that $9,000 is sort of a joke, no offense to our friends at Villanova, there's probably $9,000 worth of fees and experts that are sitting here. So I think they more than should be happy to pay the fees, and I would say, send them back and make them follow the law. Why do you have zoning laws if you don't make people follow them? Thank you.
Hello, Matt Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue, and I fortunately have sat on the Planning Commission for eight years in the township, and I know this is a very technical subject. The only way I can describe it is an example of what we had in, on North Wayne Avenue, if people are familiar with the cilantro restaurant today. The developer there kept the two existing walls and therefore was able to build over the foundation, and basically the building envelope stayed the same. We didn't get the massing that Mr. Higgins talked about, which is an incredible problem when you allow this type of development. This is very important to get right, and John Fisher, I applaud you for asking for additional fees, but this becomes a significant problem in the township when you're redeveloping property. And we know, we all know the land development process, which includes stormwater management, zoning, shade tree, and other compliance measures that this board has put in place. When we go to this, and I have, you know, no, no problems with Villanova, but when we go to this, this completely, it obscures that process. And we've seen the problems that this has occurred in the residential areas of our township. And I think Mr. Higgins pointed to one example. We have massing that doesn't occur in other developments because we have a land development process that we follow. In this example and in others, where there's a residential developer who decides to take a building down and build over foundations, they keep, sometimes they keep the foundations, but in many cases, they remove the foundations. They build a completely new house, and they do it based on a very thin permitting process. So I implore you all now to look at this, because it's just going to keep coming back to you. And whether Villanova gets their waiver or not, you know, that's, that's a different matter. This is a very important land development issue, so please be consistent with your process. And in, in my opinion, it needs to go through the complete land development process to make it fair for all the property owners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much, and thank you for your caucus, and we'll look forward to having you on the agenda.
Hi, Jim.
The next item is, we're going to go to R2.
No, no, let me approve of 145 King of Prussia Road.
We're in the caucus again, preliminary approval of 145 King of Prussia Road. This is Biomed Realty Trust Incorporated, and I think they're represented here tonight.
Thank you, Nick Cunialli, representing Biomed. And just, you're going to be hearing from several people tonight, and just so you know who they are. Mike Devine, I think you're familiar with everybody. Mike Devine, who's Senior Director of Leasing and Development for Biomed. Ross Cole, who's the project architect and planner from the architectural firm of BAM Architecture Studio. Alex Tweedy, who's the project civil engineer from the firm of Dave Newell. John Witchner, traffic consultant and engineer from the firm of McMahon Associates. And George Kretschulich, my co-counsel, who's with the law firm of Dwayne Morris. The last time this board saw this plan, you were looking at a 550,000 square foot plan. Based on the comments we received from you and based on issues that were raised, we had, what you have before you this evening for the caucus session is a 533,000 square foot plan. The current plan, the 533,000 square foot plan complies with all the township legal issues that were raised by the various boards. The only remaining legal issue was, as you're well aware, the solicitor's opinion regarding the zoning code section dealing with the construction of a parking structure for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. Issue's been briefed, it's been argued, I think you've seen multiple memos from the various attorneys on this matter, and although we disagree with the solicitor on his opinion on this, particularly in light on the way it's been interpreted by the township in the past, we have come up with a plan that basically reduces the square footage and eliminates the surface parking in accordance with the code. That plan is for 475,000 square foot offices, as well is it eliminates the required allowable surface parking as required by the ordinance. And just to go back on the issue and why we're now compliant, the plan, you recall that the section states that parking structures are permitted as an accessory use in the zoning code for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. There's nothing in that section that says how much allowable surface parking needs to be eliminated. What you'll see here this evening is, in fact, we've eliminated surface parking, and this is consistent with some of the cases that are relatively recent, actually after the solicitor's opinion regarding interpretation of ordinances, and if the ordinance does not specifically state something, how it has to be interpreted in favor of the landowner. So what we'll do is we'll make a presentation here this evening. Certainly, if you have questions, feel free to ask. And at the conclusion, I'm sure you're going to have some questions on it, and we'll--
Nick, can I ask you, is this presentation going to be for the 475 or for the 533?
What we're showing you basically is a, it's really not that much different. What we've done on the 475 is removed some of the building area and then also--
So is that going to be reflected, or?
This has to be discussed this evening--
Just discussed. So will you be putting in a revised?
I mean, well, the question is, I think also, if the board saw fit to do it, since it is a very minor change, basically, we're removing one of the buildings, and as I said, we're eliminating some of the surface parking and putting it underground, and as a result, it's really relatively minor items that are changing, you know, here this evening. So we're really going to discuss both of them to some extent. You know, we're going to show you how the 533 plan complies with the legal issues that were raised, and also we'll show you a sketch of the 475 plan that shows how we've reduced surface parking as well as reducing some of the area.
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Chairman, which plan then is the board is hearing? Or is it the, which one, 533? To me, I'm just confused, which, which one are they submitting? Both or one?
Well, the 533 plan is a plan that's before the board this evening on their caucus--
Is that being withdrawn, or?
Well, what we're suggesting, if the board deems fit, that we will reduce the square footage as well as eliminate surface parking. So we're proposing to the board at least a 475,000 square foot plan with numerous improvements as well.
So it's 475 you're proposing to the board tonight?
That's correct.
Could I enter my appearance? I'm George Brosman, I represent Brandywine. This is the first we've heard of this plan. There's another plan that was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. It's totally out of procedure to come here tonight and say there's a new plan that hasn't been reviewed, nobody's seen it, and if that's the plan Nick just said that they're now going with, they need to submit that, have that reviewed, and go back. It's totally unfair for us to hear about that tonight and to proceed on that. So I would ask that, if that's the case, then, that this meeting be postponed until they submit the plan that they want to have reviewed and have it be reviewed and let us review it and proceed in that fashion.
And one thing I should say, I congratulate Mr. Beatty when he left the room this evening. I thought he was right on point on a number of items that he stated. And, you know, again, you know, I'll just state that because we try to be polite, we try to be professional, and this happens constantly with developments that we've been involved in. We are presenting a plan here this evening. We have the right to present our plan, we have the right to present to the board alternatives to the plan, we have the right to show how we're reducing square footage. So please give us an opportunity to present our plan. Ross?
Just one point of order before we do that. I don't, I don't see how we can proceed on, you have to put the plan before us that we're going to review. So if there's a different plan, I don't see how we can proceed and review that.
Right. Yeah, all we're doing--
I think we can review the one with 533, but not the other one.
Go ahead, George, you can always go to.
You always make changes.
We're going to show you the 533. You will be able to tell us for yourselves whether or not what we're showing you is anything that you deem significantly different. We are showing you, we are, this is a caucus, this is an informal, we're going to present something to you and say, here's what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so the--
This is not a full plan approval tonight, this is not--
Proceed, proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just say, Nick, I don't know what you meant, but your reference to Mr. Beatty. Were you saying that you thought Mr. Brosman was impolite, or were you, or you saying that you're directing at one of us, or the public? Mr. Brosman is a friend of mine. I have nothing, I wasn't directing at anyone, Rich, I wasn't directing at you--
There was an inference, there was an inference there.
I was just saying, there was no inference in Ken at all.
Nick, we're in a caucus, we're not on that issue. Sit down. Let's go. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ross Cole with BAM Architecture Studio, and our plan tonight is to present to you an overview of what we've discussed, both here at the Board of Commissioners in the past as well as the Planning Commission last week. So what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes of your time to go through that presentation. The things that I'll present to you are the Radnor Park campus, and I call it a campus because what we are trying to do is create something that has a cohesive campus feel to it, as opposed to a series of buildings that are simply just placed on a site surrounded by asphalt. Talk briefly about the zoning compliance and how we feel that we are in full compliance with that, and then have a brief discussion about presentation, excuse me, a brief presentation about the transportation aspects of this, including how the 475,000 square foot plan factors into this. So a couple of things to show you that have been updated from the presentation that we gave you back in January. This is a view that is looking up King of Prussia Road from the south entry to the site. One of the things that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting was, there was a question that came up about whether or not we had shown traffic signals at this location in the rendering. So we've updated this rendering, which you may recall you had seen something similar back in January. This rendering is showing you the impact of the traffic signals as well as the crosswalk at that intersection that you'll see a little further back in the documents. What I'd like to remind the board about is that we've tried to be careful in the development of this project to be very respectful of the street view itself. We're trying to-- We're trying to retain as much of the vegetation that is at the street surface or the front yard of the site. And that's what's partly being reflected here in this view that you're seeing.
Wasn't that, isn't there a goose crossing right there?
A goose, oh, yes.
I mean, accuracy.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, when we get towards the back southeast corner of the site, what I'd like to point out to you here is, this is really where two of the main entry points are to the site. From a, both a visitor perspective as well as anybody who's becoming to work at the site. The first thing that I'd like to point out is that we've really tried hard to make this a very pedestrian-friendly environment. You'll see that we show a lot of green area. We have tried to minimize the impact of asphalt on the site. And I'll explain a few reasons why in just a few minutes. We also think it's very important in terms of attracting a Class A tenant to the site. The examples that I used when we were at the planning commission were a tenant like an IBM or a DuPont. And when I say DuPont, I mean their office divisions, marketing, some executive office space as opposed to industrial. I want to make sure that that is clear. We see this very much as a Class A tenant type of site for brand-name tenants, which we think speaks to the future of Radnor. That means that the architecture needs to be very forward-looking and speak to the future of what these firms are typically looking for to be able to attract the best and brightest. And that's part of what we're displaying here. Additionally, what we have also tried to focus on is the magic of that space between the buildings. We have a lot of options here. One of the options is we could simply put in sidewalks, put in some paved asphalt, put in some striping, and put parking spaces right outside these buildings. It would certainly be convenient to be able to park in this area that you're seeing between the buildings and walk in. We chose to make this a more pedestrian-friendly environment. That's something that the landowner has embraced. It's something that they've also done at other campuses around the country where they've had tenants that are looking to attract the best and brightest. So what we've done here is we've proposed the idea that there would be sculptural elements. There'd be places for people to be able to sit and gather. The materials that we use to be able to define those spaces would be very pedestrian-friendly as opposed to something that is much more car-friendly and does not encourage people to be able to meet and gather outdoors. Likewise, when you look at the, what we refer to as the pedestrian main street on the campus, we're showing a variety of spaces here. One of the things that you'll see, for instance, which we've noted for the planning commission, is a bocce court. The idea again being that looking at some of the best practices happening at other campuses around the country, whether it's in Palo Alto or whether it's in New England. The idea of being able to create things that really make people want to be at this campus. So having things that are friendly that really encourage the pedestrian, I think are going to be key for an environment like this. And in particular at this campus, I think it's very special because we have to remember that we have a rail line stop at one corner of the site. We have a bus stop at another corner of the site. And then we have another rail line location that is about a 10-minute walk from the site itself. So what that we see is one of the key drivers with a site like this is the ability to attract people from the, in Center City, Philadelphia, particularly young commuters that are in their twenties or early thirties that are happy to do the reverse commute. And we're seeing a lot more of that as we look at other campuses that we've worked on around the country. And we think that this site is ripe for it. When we look at the north end of the site, again, similar to what you had seen on the south end of the campus, we're trying to create something that is a very friendly, very transparent environment so that people feel like there is an openness about the area. There's a forward-looking nature to it. Again, sidewalks, sculpture, and a clear sense of where the entry points are so that people know where to go and also have that sense of a welcoming feel to it. And then lastly, we looked at something that you haven't seen before but was a question that had come up in previous discussions about how we're treating some of those spaces that are between the buildings. In a moment, I'll get into the zoning, but without getting into that too far, you'll see that we've created these atrium-like spaces that are between the buildings. The atrium itself obviously is, could be part of one building or it could be a separate building itself from a zoning code perspective. But the intent here is to be able to create an environment that people can use year-round. If this were Palo Alto, California, we might not even build an atrium. We might just leave it open. But the reality is that we need to have some sort of space where people can gather year-round to be able to enjoy the environment, not just for the five or six months of the year when and if the winter actually leaves us this year. So with that, and just trying to go through this quickly to allow time for discussion, I'll just explain to you briefly some of the zoning analysis that we had done. This is simply an application of taking what the zoning code allows right now in terms of where the street is, which is right here. The setback, which is required over here on all the sides of the property. This gray area that you're seeing is the area that's allowed for parking. This area that you're seeing in this sort of reddish color is the area that is the envelope that's allowable for the buildings themselves. And so what we did was, out of that, carved these four buildings that you're seeing in over here, and carved that pedestrian main street that I was talking about a moment ago, which easily could have just been a car transit path over here. And the same thing with this. We even offset these to be able to encourage more of a pedestrian movement as opposed to a car-like movement to them. Now if I go to the next slide, you'll see that this is that same view in plan. And a couple of things that I'd like to point out over here. One is the circulation of the site, which has this main circulation path going around the perimeter of the buildings over here to be able to maintain that sense of cohesiveness that you're seeing between the buildings. And we'll talk in a few minutes about some of the changes that are being proposed to the plan. But again, the plan itself is intended to remain the same cohesive feel that it's got here. It's really a square footage question that I think we want to put before the board tonight. Now, when I abstract that plan a little bit, just to show you from a zoning perspective what we had done, you can see that we've got four groups of buildings that are in the different colors over here. The zoning code allows for three buildings to be connected, no more than three buildings. And then a 45-foot separation between the buildings. In many cases, we have more than a 45-foot separation between those buildings. And there are several reasons for that, particularly with aesthetic drivers. What I'll do, just very quickly, is I'll focus in on this blue section over here. And what I'd like to point out is, one of the things that came up in the process of this project is, one of the areas of the code that indicates a 90-degree offset is a bit ambiguous about how you're supposed to achieve that offset. So for guidance, we looked at what the town has opined on in other cases recently. And we thought it was appropriate to look at the CICD approach where there was a niche that is cut out of the building that is roughly 6 by 24, which you're seeing over here and over here, that allows for that transition on those 160-foot dimensions. To put that into photographic terms, to use that terminology, this is that same sort of offset that I talked about a moment ago in plan, which allows for that sense of one building to the left and another building to the right. Now additionally, we also looked at the concept of the parking itself. And have, as I hopefully have indicated so far, that we really want this campus to feel, have a strong pedestrian feel to it. So because of that, what we've done is, we've put in subsurface parking. And you can see these arrows over here at these four locations indicate where those subsurface entry and exit points are to the site. I won't go into all of the details about the fact that our subsurface parking has been fully thought out, including the way it integrates with the building structures above to be able to attract those Class A tenants. But what I will point out is that by doing that, by putting that subsurface parking in there, what it's done is it's helped us to be able to maintain that sense of greenness. And what I'd like to just point out next is, this is a sketch that the town had commissioned from an independent consultant to get their opinion about what could be done on the site. And you'll see that there are several things that are very similar to our site. You've got a group of buildings here that are all separated from one another. You've got buildings that are connected to one another. And when we do a side-by-side comparison of what was presented over here to what we are proposing to do over here, I think you'll see that there is extensive similarity between the two ideas of what could be done. Same circulation concept, same idea of groups of buildings together on the site. We think that the one step that we've taken a little bit further is just to be able to develop some clarity in over here in terms of that ability to circulate, which we'll also talk about in just a moment. And so when we get to the next piece of the puzzle over here, what I'd also like to talk about is the whole sense of the effect of the subsurface parking on the environment. You can see there's a lot of green space in over here, particularly as we're looking at these areas over here. What we're trying to avoid is this kind of an environment, where you have these rows and rows of parking and just a huge amount of asphalt surrounding the buildings. What you're seeing over here is Radnor Financial Center. Nothing against Radnor Financial Center. This is actually something that is a fairly common planning technique that still happens today. We just think that there's a lot that can be done better. And that's one of the reasons why we're pushing so hard for the subsurface parking is because precisely helps to avoid this type of, really what we find to be very much car-focused and very little pedestrian-focused type of environment. And particularly when you're trying to attract the best and brightest, that is something, the campus environment to them, we find is extremely important in today's world. So we're really trying hard to avoid that, that situation. And I think this side-by-side example shows it well. You can see Radnor Financial over here, you can see our site over here, and you can see the clear sense of greenness that we're showing. And this is from a faraway spot. This is literally, you can see we're hundreds of feet from the buildings over here. So this is not just simply some close-up snapshot. This is really showing you between this and those other renderings that I showed you a moment ago, the effort that we're going to, to really try and turn this into something that has a strong Class A corporate feel to it. So with that, what I'd like to do is ask Alex Tweedy from Naive Newell to come up and talk just briefly about some of the civil engineering aspects of the project.
Thank you, Ross. Alex Tweedy with Naive Newell, the civil engineer for the project. Relative to this plan, we've gotten some review letters from staff and we've actually worked with them since the planning commission met with them earlier today to talk about some of the engineering issues and comment letter issues. I think what we wanted to highlight, we believe we will comply on almost all the comments except for two larger issues, which we wanted to talk about in a little bit more detail here. When we get into traffic, we'll talk about the traffic signal location, which I know is one of the comments that we still want to discuss from the board. But the other issue that we wanted to address from an engineering perspective in a layout of the plan was a waiver that we're requesting for sidewalk along King of Prussia Road frontage, which has been in the previous comment letters and still is on the comment letters from staff. And the area in question is on, along King of Prussia Road frontage here. The site currently doesn't have sidewalk, we're not proposing sidewalk. And there were some comments from staff, and we kind of disagree a little bit with the code language that the sidewalk is expressly permitted. This is a major collector, so it's as recommended by PennDOT. It's not expressly permitted, and PennDOT doesn't actually own this street. This portion of King of Prussia Road is a township road. So we actually believe that it isn't even required by the ordinance here. But if the board views differently, we would like to request a waiver from that code. The basis for that waiver is twofold. One, we believe as this chart shows, there's sufficient pedestrian circulation for all the campus users to get to any necessary location, transit stop, regional sidewalks that already exist today. So that sidewalk has limited benefit to it. Also in addition, when you get to the south of the property, as we've discussed before, when we've talked about all the right-of-way issues, this parcel here is owned by PennDOT. Our right-of-way is in the rear here. This front parcel is actually owned by PennDOT. And the sidewalk, you have stream channels and a detention basin right along the frontage here. And the sidewalk can't actually be extended further south. So constructing this sidewalk and then having it stop and not being able to get all the way to 30 is of limited benefit. And as you can see here, our users can already, we're providing a sidewalk directly to the R-100 station. There's already a sidewalk from King of Prussia Road. This corner is the bus stop. There's already a sidewalk on the Radnor Racket property that gets back to the R-100 station. If you come out of our site, you can travel the sidewalk in front of Radnor Racket and 201 up to the R-5 station. On the west side of the property, there's a sidewalk from 30 all the way up. And we're providing signals at both these locations, which would have crosswalks to get access to that sidewalk. So we believe from a connectivity standpoint and access to regional transit and sidewalks, the plan we're proposing is sufficient and provides every pathway. In discussion, there was a request to review the Greenways Plan. And then there's been discussion on trail connections through this property. What we are willing to build is the requested trail. This trail, in a similar form, appears on the Greenways Plan to bring a trail through the 476 right-of-way, basically through the woods under the overpass and connect into our onsite sidewalk, which would allow connection from anybody on the opposite side of the underpass to come from the east, be able to walk through the woods, come under the underpass around, there's an existing bridge across the stream in this location. Then they would intersect our existing sidewalk and be able to come to our traffic light, cross the street, go up the sidewalk. Or if it's one of our users, they'd be able to come into the site. Give the opportunity for our tenants to be able to access any of the restaurants or vice versa, have anyone from this portion of the town come through this property and be able to travel along the King of Prussia Road corridor.
Tunnel under there is that we're using?
This is actually an overpass for the stream that's there today. There's actually, this portion is elevated. And there's a stream that runs underneath it with some level areas on the side that we'll be able to put the sidewalk or trail, whatever it is. And what area? Well, both of these are under. So this, all, see how it changes from kind of black to the concrete color? All three of these concretes are basically bridges. So this pathway comes underneath all of those, and you'd be able to connect. And just in closing on this topic, the main reason that we don't want to build the sidewalk here is we've been working with Shade Tree. And we were actually there earlier, well, I guess in February. They've asked us to look along this street frontage. There's a cluster of 30 to 36-inch mature oak trees that provide a very nice streetscape in the area of the existing visitor lot across from Raider Road. Without the sidewalk, we're able to preserve those. And if we were required to build the sidewalk, we'd have to rip out all those trees. And Shade Tree really wanted to keep some of those nice, larger trees in this area. And with this plan, we believe we're able to save all those trees and provide all the necessary pathways and pedestrian connections available without the need to connect a sidewalk that can't provide any additional benefit since we can't get it all the way down to 30 anyway. So, like we said, the other, the other big issue is the traffic light, which we'll talk to when we speak about the traffic. But as previously discussed, we also wanted to take a moment to show you the additional plan, which is basically just a reduction of density from this version and a reduction of the allowable surface parking on that plan. And similar to the comparison that Ross showed in between this plan and the Route 2 plan, I mean, if we could change to, I guess, the tabletop. As his zoning envelope analysis showed, the zoning code basically sets how this site's going to look. And we've basically kept the layout almost, it's very similar, similar to, first, the original Route 2 by Ray plan, the 533 plan and this plan. All have a center mass of buildings and a ring road of parking. It's a similar plan.
Yeah, it's, can you go to the camera?
Jim, can you put the camera on the table? Thank you.
So, I apologize, it's not colored. It's just really a working sketch at this time. But as you can see, it's very similar. The only differences are, it's three clusters of buildings instead of one, which reduces, or instead of four, reduces the density of the plan. And it eliminates about 15% of the allowable surface parking for the property. It's still got the same circulation path, it's still got the parking with... It's still got the parking within the parking setback and the buildings within the building And with that, we can discuss some of the traffic implications of the project and the reduction in square footage and what it does for traffic in the area.
Thanks, Alex. Good evening. John Witchner with McMahon Associates. If we can actually go back to the laptop, that'd be great. Thank you. On the plan on the projector here, starting off with this particular plan, we wanted to show that based upon our existing studies, about 75% of the traffic to and from the site will be heading to the south toward Lancaster area and Lancaster Avenue. About 25% will be heading to the north up King of Prussia Road. We therefore wanted to focus on the southern driveway as the main access for the development. At the southern access, we are anticipating a traffic signal to assist for vehicles getting into and out of the site. We have two lanes exiting the site. One is a separate left-turn lane exiting the site. The other is a separate, is a combined left and right-turn lane exiting the site, which will be operated under the traffic signal. Moving toward the northern driveway, we will be also improving that particular driveway for one left-turn lane coming out of the site and one right-turn lane coming out of the site. Along King of Prussia Road, as was, has been discussed before, we are increasing the width of King of Prussia Road from a three-lane cross-section to a four-lane cross-section. And all of that widening is being performed on the site side. No widening is being performed on the Radnor High School side. It's all being performed on the site side. In addition to that, that also gets us a right-turn lane into the northern driveway, which is shared with the Norristown High Speed Line and the access and the parking lot in the back there. Also on this plan is a proposed traffic signal at Raider Road. We feel as though, and we've heard from township staff that that is potentially, certainly we're viewing it as a, as a safety benefit for high school drivers to give them their own signalized access, much like what is being done at Raider Road and Radnor Chester Road. We feel as though that that's something that can then be tied into the signal at the southern driveway and start to act as, as one entire system among other signals along Lancaster Avenue as well as King of Prussia Road. Offsite of this, of this, of this plan, maybe not necessarily shown on this aerial. So, what I've just presented before, to you here tonight was a lot of the same talking points that has been presented before on previous densities. Since then, and since hearing some comments from the commissioners over the last couple of months and also from the planning commission last week, we are also taking a look at some additional improvements beyond those just discussed here. Again, we have the traffic signal at Raider Road. We have a traffic signal at the southern driveway. We have, what wasn't presented before was a right-turn lane on King of Prussia Road into the southern access, heading northbound onto, on King of Prussia Road. In addition to the south at Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road, we're looking at two improvements at that intersection. One, if you're heading southbound on King of Prussia Road, typically in the morning, in the afternoon, peak hours, you're caught in vehicle stacking in a queue. What we're looking to do is add a second southbound right-turn lane from King of Prussia Road onto Lancaster Avenue. Right now, I believe in different peak hours, there are, there is stacking on southbound King of Prussia Road back up to, toward the high school. And what this, what this improvement now does is allows us to reduce that queuing, reduce that stacking, reallocate some green time to make that intersection more efficient. Across from King of Prussia Road on the northbound 476 off-ramp, as it comes to Lancaster Avenue, right now, there is, there are dual left-turn lanes to turn left onto westbound Route 30. And there is a separate through lane to continue on King of Prussia Road. And then there's a separate right-turn lane. What we're looking to do is take that separate right-turn lane and re-stripe it as a shared through right-turn lane. What that then allows us to do, there's about twice as many vehicles looking to go straight through this intersection than there are to make a right turn. And that now allows us to reduce that queue, doesn't back up potentially onto the blue route, heading northbound to the off-ramp. And again, allows us to reallocate some green time to different approaches of the intersection that, that, that needs it. So, those are, those are two more improvements that, that we have not discussed before. In addition to the signal at Raider Road and the right-turn lane at the northern, at the southern access. Lastly, in this general area, there are two signal systems in the general area. One along Lancaster Avenue, east and west from King of Prussia Road, as well as along Radnor Chester Road, continuing up King of Prussia Road to Madison Ford Road. There are two separate systems. With the two proposed traffic signals along King of Prussia Road, it gives us the opportunity not only to link those two signals to the two systems, now they can operate under one, one signal system. But Biomed is also exploring and offering to take a look at the latest traffic signal technology, adaptive traffic signal technology. There are some other intersections along Lancaster Avenue quarter that I believe the township has gotten, gotten funding for, for other intersections within the system as well as, that's great, thanks, Ross. So, with this, with these two signal systems, we can now marry them together. There, this, these improvements also allow the township to leverage this funding for additional funding to get, for additional grant money from PennDOT and from the state. This, this technology, we're looking to do at nine different intersections within, within the Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road corridor, starting from King of Prussia Road and Lancaster Avenue, working toward the west to Radnor Chester Road and Lancaster Avenue, up Radnor Chester Road to King of Prussia, continuing up King of Prussia to the Madison Ford Road. Again, this marries now two different signal systems and it allows us to use the latest technology for the traffic adaptive system, which really assesses real-time traffic data and then utilizes that historical data and real-time data to reallocate green time as it sees fit. And it's not controlled by just a few pre-programmed timing plans. And so, I believe in this southeast PA region, about 175 to 200 traffic signals are currently using this latest technology. There's a new quarter on the books every month practically in terms of what PennDOT is asking municipalities and private developers to do. There's Route 202 in Upper Marion, New Town Bypass in Bucks County, the Route 202 Parkway in Montgomery and Bucks Counties, Route 100 in Upper Euclid Township. These are all traffic adaptive signal systems that are, that are being employed by PennDOT. So, those are the, really the five, I guess, new improvements that we're talking about.
Can I have some clarity? Excuse me?
Yes.
Just a little clarity. I think I heard you say that you would be, as part of this development plan, you would be paying for the adaptive signaling systems on nine signals? And are those the ones shown?
That is correct.
It'll be 10 because we got a new signal going in at the high school.
And we, we can, these are existing signals that are, that are currently on the plans. I certainly understand about the, the high school driveway on Radnor Chester Road.
Okay, so nine or 10. But the point is you're, you're saying you're going to look at all the signals in that area, convert them to adaptive controls.
That is correct.
And you will fund that as part of the?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That is correct.
Great.
And as, as I was going through some previous slides here that Ross kind of helped me through, I wanted to kind of go back to a couple of different plan, a couple of different slides that, one has been presented before at a different density. Before, several months ago, it was before you, at a 551,000 square foot plan, we talked about the difference between the 2009 approved plan versus the 551,000 square foot plan. We then talked about all the national standards that I'm required to use from Institute of Transportation Engineers, as well as a transit capture for, for traffic in the area, both as an apples-to-apples comparison between the proposed density and the 2009 approved plan. At 533,000 square foot, we made a comparison, used, again, apples-to-apples between the ITE with a 7% transit capture versus the 2009 approved plan. And as you can see on, on the columns all the way to the, to the right, in the morning peak hour, the 533,000 square foot density generates approximately 65 additional trips in the morning peak hour as compared to the 2009 approved plan, which is about 50% office space and 50% lab space. Just for the, for the board's edification, we did take a look at the ITE data, both for about 50% office and 50% lab. So, we did not assume 100% lab space in that 2009 approved plan. Again, in the morning peak hour, with the 7% transit capture, 65 new trips in the AM and approximately 55 new trips in the PM as, as compared to the 2009 approved plan. Now, as you recall, I've been before the board a number of different times talking about this transit, transit capture. We've seen very credible data on, on a lot of number of different studies that show 15, 20, 20% transit capture for a transit-oriented development such as this, next to the Norristown High Speed Line, within walking distance of the Radnor Septa line, within, along the site frontage, there's a bus line. I've, I've said time and time again, SEPTA Regional Rail is at an all-time high as of the latest numbers. You can't go weak without reading Philly.com and having a, an article about the use of transit, the reverse commute from Millennials from Center City, Philly to the suburbs along these, these rail lines. In discussions with township staff, they felt as though at this time, a 7% transit capture or transit interaction is what they can support at this time. We feel as though the 7% transit interaction or capture is modest, but we understand where their position is and we're doing further calculations at this point going from.
Just so I understand, when you say capture, do you mean the employees or people that are going to be at that site? 7% of them will use mass transit or are you talking about other people?
No, that, just from this site, approximately 7% of employees, based upon the types of tenants that Biomed is looking to, to bring into the site, approximately 7% of those employees will be using mass transit, specifically Norristown High Speed Line and Radnor Station.
Can I interrupt you with just a question on this slide?
Yes.
The number for the 2009 approved plan, for the 475, you have 660, 616. And then with the discount, you have 614, 573. Those numbers are for half lab, half office, not all office.
That is correct.
So, so do you, will, I guess you will be presenting in your next iteration what it would be for all office, because you would be proposing now all office.
You're one step ahead of me.
Okay.
If I can go to the next slide, Biomed has asked me to do those same calculations as you talked about, Ms. Schaefer, regarding a density of 475,000 square feet. So, the, the square footages are very close to the 2009 approved plan. But again, the, the uses were slightly different, about 50% office space and actually about 246,000 square feet of office space and 228,000 square feet of lab space in that 2009 approved plan. So, using those same ITE criteria that we're bound by, we then take a look at the ITE and then a 7% transit, transit capture. In this calculation, during the, during the morning peak hour, we anticipate approximately five new trips based upon this development as compared to the 2009 approved plan. And the afternoon peak hour, five less trips versus the 2009 approved plan. So, that, we're starting to now get down to what we've been talking about for several years, about different ordinances and things like that, a traffic-neutral plan versus the 2009 approved plan. Remember, the 2009 approved plan did not include a lot of those off-site improvements that I just, I kind of went through during the beginning of my presentation. But this is, this is starting to now react to what we've been hearing from the board commissioners and the planning commission.
But why, under a 50%, 50% office and lab, would you have that many morning trips? Very, very close to 100% office for the same square footage? Since in a laboratory office environment, you don't have that many people.
The, the real answer to that question is, is kind of focused on how a lab space works and how an office space works. During, in an office environment, there are a lot of ebbs and flows of traffic that during the, you know, as I use an example to the team all the time, Nick may get in the office at seven, Mike gets in the office at eight, I may get in the office at nine, Alex may have a meeting at 10 o'clock and he may not come into the office until after that. What I'm getting at is that in an office environment, the, the schedule kind of ebbs and flows. So, you may have, you know, four people entering in the morning, but only one of them may be in the peak hour. So, we need four, four parking spaces for those four employees, but one or two may be entering in the peak hour. In all, in a lab space, that's, that tends to be more shift-oriented in more of a team environment. The lab may be from 7:00 to 3:30 or 7:00 to 4:00, 7:00 to 5:00, something like that. Those employees can't necessarily work at home. Those employees can't necessarily, you know, don't necessarily have off-site meetings, which kind of starts to go to the, the ebbs and flows of an office environment. Secondly, the, the ways, the statistical model is shown in ITE is that it kind of works on a parabolic curve in that the, the larger a square foot space is, the curve starts to flatten out. Increased square footage leads to increased trips and the curve starts to flatten out as you get larger. And that's, that's where the 470,000, 475,000 square feet of office space starts to, to hit that maybe flattened curve and the regression analysis where as, in a, in a half-office, half-lab space, you're halfway closer to, you know, the zero, you know, the Y-intercept of zero, I guess, if you're, if you're talking about the graph. And now you're adding half-office space, which is on a larger part of that, of that curve, plus the half-lab space is a larger, larger part of that curve. So, I know we're kind of getting into some of the details, but following the strict ITE standards, that's where, that's where we're bound to use those numbers.
The numbers you used here are ITE numbers. They're not numbers you came up with on your own. They're actual, from the ITE manual.
That is correct. That is correct. I guess the, the question was, what were the sources of these numbers? And they are, they are based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which I am bound to use based upon the land use that we have in front of us. So, the bottom lines are starting to get down to that traffic-neutral plan. So, again, I talked about the traffic improvements here, the southbound right-turn lane on King of Prussia Road at Lancaster Avenue. It reduces that queue on southbound King of Prussia Road, allows us to reallocate some green time. Northbound through lane on the northbound 476 off-ramp at Lancaster Avenue, it, we're now able to create a shared through right lane because more traffic is actually designed to go through the intersection and turn right. The northbound right-turn lane on King of Prussia Road of the southern driveway, the new traffic signal for the high school on King of Prussia Road and the traffic adaptive signal system along King of Prussia Road quarter, as well as the Lancaster Avenue quarter, which amounts to approximately nine signals, maybe a tenth based upon the, the high school driveway there. This is the signal location. And again, really just to close up, the two proposed signals, in our opinion, at the southern driveway and Raider Road can coexist and be synchronized to manage the transportation flows along King of Prussia Road. The signal at Raider Road, in our opinion, will improve safety for vehicles entering, exiting the high school driveway. And during the morning peak hours and afternoon peak hour, the signal, signal system can now be coordinated. And then on top of that, which was described here before, on top of that, the traffic adaptive signal system can then even further maximize the, both the King of Prussia Road quarter as well as the Lancaster Avenue quarter.
Can you go back to the traffic improvements again?
Yes.
All right. Southbound right-turn lane, King of Prussia Road. I guess you don't, you don't, you don't have the map to show each one of these?
Sure. Well, I, I can.
Well, yeah, side-by-side. I should, go first.
Okay. So, if I may, my cursor's coming up here on the aerial. As you're heading southbound, this is King of Prussia Road, as you're heading southbound on King of Prussia Road, there are two left-turn lanes to go eastbound on Route 30. And there's one right-turn lane to go westbound on Route 30. A second, we are proposing a second southbound right-turn lane to go westbound on Route 30 along the ballfields of Radnor High School.
Okay, next one?
Next one was the, let me bring my, bring my cursor back up here. On northbound 476, as you come off the off-ramp, you're coming up under this overpass right here, approaching Route 30 across from Lancaster Avenue. Right now, there are dual right-turn lanes or two, I'm sorry, two left-turn lanes making a left onto westbound Route 30. And there is one through lane to go across onto, onto King of Prussia Road toward the site. And there's one right-turn lane to head eastbound on Route 30. We're seeing that there's approximately twice as many through vehicles wanting to go on King of Prussia Road versus right-turning vehicles. And if we re- And if we restripe that right turn lane to a shared through right lane, it allows us to maximize the efficiency of that approach and then reallocate some green time from there.
So, what does that mean then? Restripe to reallocate green time by, say it again, I didn't even, I didn't get that.
By restriping the approach from to.
Coming off of 476.
Coming off of 476, by restriping that, you now allow through vehicles toward King of Prussia Road to sit in two different through lanes. What that does, right now, they sit.
So, there's enough width right there to make two through lanes and one right lane or a shared, you're just going to restripe it to have an arrow through and an arrow right?
That's correct, because again, there's twice as many vehicles designed to go through than a right turn lane.
Well, that's kind of the point, right? Because there's all these cars coming off of northbound 476 coming right in today with no, nobody working there.
To go to sites that are unrelated to the Biomed site, yes.
Okay. So, what about the third one? I don't want to take, I just want to get these.
Third one is the northbound right turn lane on King of Prussia Road at the Southern driveway. So, as you come up King of Prussia Road, right now, our property lines basically stops at the Southern driveway. There is PennDOT property to the south of that driveway, which Biomed would need to acquire in order to provide that right turn lane into the Southern driveway. It's something that the township staff has asked us to explore. We've, in the past, we felt as though there's some constructability issues. I think there's still some right-of-way issues in terms of right-of-way acquisition, but the applicant is willing to enter into conversations with PennDOT to look to acquire that property.
That would make it two, six lanes right there, two coming into the right, going into the site, two coming the other way, that would be for the left-hand turns, and then two coming the other way, going to the right-hand turns.
If I can go back to a different plan here, actually, this is the driveway we're actually talking about right here.
Well, no, I'm talking about out at Lancaster Avenue, which is not on your plan there. Right there with that, right there, there's six, that'd be six lanes right there.
Yes, you have four southbound lanes and two northbound lanes, that's correct.
Okay. What's the next one?
Can we go back to that south entrance, though? You mentioned that you would be in discussions with PennDOT to acquire some of the right-of-way to widen that road, but you also said you couldn't put a sidewalk there. So, if you can widen the road, why can't we put a sidewalk there?
The right turn lane would start at the culvert and start to widen after the culvert. It would not be crossing over the culvert. That still gives us about 100-foot right turn lane with a 75-foot taper approximately.
Okay. Defer to Rich, and I have some questions about circulation of vehicles.
Sure. If I can just go through the last two improvements, new traffic signal for the high school on King of Prussia Road.
Right, which why would you need that? There's no entrance in the middle of the site as you propose right there, it's just Raider Road, so why do you need a light there? I don't understand that.
We heard some concerns from township staff that there were some, and as seen in our studies, there are some delay issues at that intersection in the morning and afternoon peak hours. It is somewhat difficult for vehicles to get into and out of Raider Road in an unsignalized condition. We felt as though that would be not only a benefit to the township, but then also a benefit to keep, to create a safe situation along Lancaster, along King of Prussia Road and reduce crashes along at the front door of the site.
I would believe you're going to stack cars all the way back to the town, to the high school. I mean, literally, many, many, 1,200 students. I could tell you, most of the buses for the high school are empty. That means every kid either drives or has driven. 600, 700, 800 cars every day trying to get out of there. I would not recommend a light, but all right, what's the next one? Next one, all right, it's all right, don't worry, I just want to understand what you're saying.
The traffic adaptive signal system along King of Prussia Road quarter as well as Lancaster Avenue quarter.
I'm not done, I'm just done with that piece, all right.
The only, honestly, it's probably too early to even get into this, but the traffic engineer should discuss this, but it would seem to me that, you know, maybe having one way traffic through the whole site may make sense, because you have, I'm concerned about stacking coming off of Lancaster, trying to get into the site, and then I'm also concerned about stacking coming out of the site, and if you're allowing cars to exit on the south, the south entrance exit, then we, they don't have a lot of room to stack. So, I'm just really concerned that, but again, it's a little early, but you know, coming out of that south egress, you know, I don't know what the distance is from that to the, I think it was 500 feet.
To Lancaster Avenue, yes, and.
And is it, but it's two lanes?
It's two lanes in each direction, and I think the combination of the traffic signal, the southbound right turn line on King of Prussia Road at Route 30, the northbound I-76 off-ramp improvements, and the traffic adaptive signal system, all kind of work in conjunction with each other to make sure those queues do not stack in front of adjacent intersections. And to the benefit of staff, we do have a review letter from Gilmore dated February 23rd, which they have not, have had the opportunity to assess all these, this long list of improvements because they have not seen these, you know, during their review of the letter.
Yeah, I'll wait for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. So, just to recap briefly on the concept that we are putting before you tonight, the intent with the 475, we think will address a lot of the traffic concerns to John's comment about traffic neutral. And from a plan perspective, which is one of the other things that we think that you're going to be concerned about, effectively what's happening is, we've kept the same configuration as you saw in that sketch that was presented a few minutes ago by Alex. What we're really doing is we're eliminating one of these buildings that you can see in over here, and then in eliminating that, we're widening the distance between a couple of buildings over here, pulling this one around slightly, and then having a wider distance between the buildings and the front yard of the site. So, that's effectively what the revision is to the plan, but the plan itself as a whole keeps very much the same concepts, the idea of this pedestrian main street, the idea of park lights-like space between the buildings, and so that's something that we're looking forward to showing you more of as we go further along in the project. Thank you.
Are you going to, how about the parking? You going to talk about the underground parking or how many spaces, or would you get into that or not?
We can. We didn't think that, we didn't anticipate that you'd want to get into that level of detail with it. Alex, I believe, has the specific parking numbers, if you're interested in that. I could call up a plan for you that shows the underground parking if you'd like to see it. I just, I didn't, I didn't anticipate that you'd want.
I don't think we need the numbers, do we? I think what we need is the determination as to whether it's compliant. So, I don't care to see the numbers, I'll sort of defer to staff on that. I don't know if others feel differently.
Well, I would like to see the numbers, I'd like to see, I'm still confused about what plan you're talking about and what you're presenting.
The numbers that you have for the 533 or the 475? When you said, "I'll call up the plan, we can look at it and look at the numbers," that's the 533.
That's the 533. So, obviously, the 475 would be less.
I think we should wait and see the 475.
Okay. All right, we'll wait for 475.
So, I'll go ahead and get started. Are we ready for comments?
Sure. Go ahead, make your comment, go ahead.
All right, so I have several, I have many comments, so I hope you'll bear with me. First, before I get into my general comments, I just have one very technical issue that doesn't really even involve you all at all, and that is in the park and rec land requirement and fee in lieu of, and we touched on this in the Villanova discussion earlier, but I think that our staff, I'm going to ask that our staff look at that again. There was a, originally, there was a designation in your proposal that that fee would be based on total square foot of building. It came back and was submitted that it would be based on basically footprint of building, which is far less. And in my opinion, that park and rec fee should be based on square footage of building, not on building. And, you know, I don't, we don't really need to determine that tonight, that's an outstanding issue that we'll get an opinion from our solicitor and from our staff, but it's something that was not quite resolved in the papers, and we'll resolve it before we.
I have a response to that, but.
Go ahead, I'd love to hear.
Just when you talk about building area, building area is a footprint, so that's the difference. I think the Villanova issue before that was a little bit different because they were just counting in addition as opposed to the whole structure, whereas the code itself says building area, and I think what they're planning on here is the fee in lieu based on the building area, which is basically defined as a footprint.
Right, and I, you know, that may be true, that it's a term of art in other places. In this particular, I mean, we were all on this board when we passed that statute, and what, we definitely didn't mean it to just be a footprint, it was meant to be commensurate with the amount of building and the amount of stress on our community that each, you know, each square foot would put on our community in terms of wear and tear on our community.
Well, the issue is, is that if you don't have land to give us.
Right, you can't even give us a fee.
Give us a fee, but it's based on the amount of land that you're taking up, not how high you go.
No, no, that's not true. It's based on the increase of demand of our parks and rec and our services, and because when you build, the more you build, the more demand you put on. And if you're just counting the footprint, you could build all, you know, that's not the way the logic works. When you, if you look at the residential part of it, it's not based on the footprint of your condominium complex, it's based on your dwelling units. So, it's, you know, if you stack up three, you're going to pay three times because that's increased demand. So, anyway, we don't have to resolve this tonight, I'm bringing it up, we'll get an opinion from our staff, and we'll move on from there. And that was just a technical issue I wanted to bring up. In general, I'm very, very pleased to see the density go down, because, you know, my first comment tonight after watching the Planning Commission and the discussion of the 533 was, you know, we would love to see a revised plan with less density, so I'm thrilled to see that. Unfortunately, you know, we still have this traffic issue, even with that much less density, the traffic numbers are still, you know, 619 in the morning, new cars, and 568 in an afternoon, and that's because it's all office and it's all rush hour traffic, and that's still a problem. I am thrilled again to see that you, as a landowner applicant, are aware that that's a problem. It's going to cost a lot of money to take care of all those cars, and I'm thrilled to see you proactively starting to step up and say, "We'll pay for some of that money that it's going to cost to take care of all those cars." It's not insurmountable, they can be handled, but it's going to be very expensive. I don't want to opine right now on what you've put on the table because we haven't heard from our traffic engineer, and, you know, a lot will hinge upon her opinion of what these measures will take care of and whether there's even more that needs to be taken care of. Moving along, I wanted to bring up the Greenways Plan with you in the notes that we have and in the letters that go back and forth, you know, this was sort of put over to the side and we'll discuss it with the commissioners. I'm sure you're familiar with the Greenways Plan, I'm sure you've seen that, you know, Sections 9B, C, D, and E, all really, they involve your property and the trail system that stems off of your property. Again, thrilled to see that you embraced a piece of it, would love to see you embrace more of it, and some of that might be intertwined with the discussion we have on the fee that you're paying with the parks and rec fee. You know, the total cost of that segment, that 9B through 9E, is $1.9 million to our township. That, having that segment of our Greenways Plan done, will benefit your employee, your tenants greatly. So, I think that's a discussion that needs to evolve. The sidewalk on King of Prussia, I just don't get why the heels are dug in on this, I don't. It, to me, for, you know, you're striving so hard to make this pedestrian friendly, and it's a 75-foot swath of land, I mean, I know there are definitely big trees there, you don't have to build the sidewalk right through the trees, you know, you can meander it, and I don't, I don't get it. I mean, I don't understand the reticence, but I strongly believe a sidewalk or walking path or something needs to go there, it makes no sense not to put it there, especially if you're going to put the Section 9A or 9B, I think it is, that goes under the blue route that connects you to Lancaster Avenue a little bit north, excuse me, a little bit east. Of course, you're going to want to connect that to the front of the property and have that go to the bus station. So, I don't, it does make a bit of sense to me to not include that, and it doesn't need to go all the way down to Lancaster Avenue, because it would connect to Lancaster Avenue a bit east in front of the Provo property. So, I think that we, again, our discussions need to evolve on that. Finally, my last comment is, I think we're headed in the right direction here in terms of density going down, traffic being dealt with, and some of the expenses that this traffic is going to be, bring, being dealt with. However, as you all know, we are simultaneously on a parallel track, and you'll hear in about an hour from now, we are still looking at whether we can bring other uses into PLO and the effect that that may have, and I implore you, as you move forward with this Buy Right action, please keep an open mind, please participate in that process, because the big problem here is the single use. It's the single use, that is the problem. That is, if we can get other uses there and have it still be neutral for all, it's a better solution for everyone, for everyone who has to drive on King of Prussia Road, which includes all your tenants. So, I'm just, one more time, going to put it out there, please, even as you move forward with this, participate in that, participate, try and make that a workable solution, and then maybe you'll have two great choices at the end of this process. Okay, those are my comments.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll go next if it's all right. Couple of questions first. John Rice, you prepared a memo for us about the compliance of the parking, is that something that you can share, or is that something that we can't share right now?
No, I think that was, that was out in the public domain.
Okay, so, you viewed it as not compliant, correct? That's what you communicated to us.
Yeah, the plan, the major problem I had with the plan and the parking on the, I think that was the 533 plan, is that the parking spaces were being moved and buildings were being put in their place.
Yeah.
So, and Don, on this plan, I don't know whether they're doing that or not.
So, that remains to be seen. My gut tells me that 475 or 533 is not likely to affect the opinion you gave us, but that's something that still remains for an evaluation if another plan is submitted.
Right, I'm going to look at that with Kevin. What I heard was they're removing 15% of allowable parking.
The next question is for the applicant, the decision to widen the roads, there are various times where the roads are wide and turning lanes are, lanes are increased, is that a decision that, did that come from PennDOT, did that come from staff, did that come from the applicant? It was communicated like it was a done deal, and who made, who'd made that determination?
I defer to John to answer that question, because that's outside the realm of architecture, so I don't want to try and interpret, I think it's best of John.
I think you have to come to the mic.
There were a couple of comments in the Gilmore Review Letter from February 23rd that talked about some improvements that they would like to see explored, whether it's through a concept plan, through cost estimates and analyses, and those were some of the items that was the, kind of come to fruition, the list of improvements here.
Okay, thank you. The next question is for our traffic engineer. Did we look at the determination that had the 50% office for all intents and purposes equal to the 100% office? That surprised me. Did we review that? Do we concur with that?
You know, I, that's what I've been doing on my computer, is scrounging through old TISs, so I don't know right now for sure. Anything that was submitted, we went through. I don't know if the 2012 submission was vetted out, and I'm guessing that's where that information came from originally, and I don't see any discussion about factoring up because of the laboratory. I'm seeing all the trip generation was based on general office, I don't see anything that discussed laboratory. There's discussion about it being laboratory, but I'm not seeing any projections for.
Okay, so that's one, that surprised me, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the subject to say that it's right or wrong, but familiar enough to say that that surprised me that you equated those two or made them for all intents and purposes the same, so I would, we. same. So I would, we would need our staff to address that.
Right. I'm, I'm actually in the trip generation calculations right now and I'm having trouble even finding a use for a laboratory. I'm finding it for research and development. So I don't know what trip generation you used in it.
All right, so then my thoughts in general at this point, this has come to us several times with several unresolved items in, in two kind of categories. The first category was a lot of administrative items that I, I don't think really would affect the outcome terribly much. I think you could just adjust to them and the plan seems to adjust to them. So those weren't an issue. But, and then we have a second category of some of the items like the steep slopes. I'm not sure we can make a determination until we know for sure about the steep slopes. Roger, is that, I don't see that as something we can defer until, you know, and say that'll, that'll be done during, during the building phase.
That's correct. I've asked them to show that and they've agreed that they will show them.
So before it comes to us for a decision, that would come to us with the information that you can make a determination.
That's correct because I need to determine the location of those slopes and see if they affect the layout of it.
So I don't need to address it now, just that it will be addressed.
I mean, there's some history that we could provide.
No, I'd rather just when, when the time comes, we won't have to rely on this being done at, in the building phase. And then the last is, the big issue is, is to whether the, the parking as the applicant has proposed it is allowable. So we have conflicting signals or, or from our advisors. My opinion at this point is that I, I see it as not compliant. I mean, I read everything that your side provided. I read what John provided, John Rice. And I see it as not compliant. I, I see, you know, Jim earlier said, we don't regulate massing. And I disagree with that statement. I think we do regulate massing and this is one of the ways that we regulate massing. And so as much as I like the idea, like your plan is a better looking plan than, you know, the plan that, the plan that you compared it to. I just, at this point, I don't see it compliant with our code. I see it as not compliant for the reasons that John Rice identified.
And, and Don, that was a difference between the 533 and, and what we showed 475. The 533 plan, as I, as we mentioned before, we really didn't agree with Mr. Rice's opinion, but the 533 plan did not eliminate any of the surface parking. The, this, this slight revision by reducing one of the buildings and eliminating one of the buildings actually does eliminate surface parking and puts it underground and increases the landscape area as a result.
Okay.
So it's a little bit different issue now that we're, that we're saying.
It's a little bit different issue and we'll, I'll take another look at it. But coming here today, reading everything that was provided by both sides, my determination was that it was not compliant.
Yeah, but, and, and again, as I mentioned, we saw Mr. Rice's opinion and that's why we've did a slight revision to the plan whereby we have eliminated surface parking.
Okay. Well, so we'll take a look at that and Mr. Rice will also. Also, the traffic light is a big issue, correct? Because there's still a difference of opinion between our staff and your application on the need for traffic, the, the number of traffic lights. Is that correct?
My understanding is that we are requesting a traffic light at the southern entrance and-
Where our staff is saying that we shouldn't have one.
I believe that is still the case. I, you know, I defer to Amy on that.
So there are some big-
I know there's been a lot of discussion on that traffic light, you know, so.
I, I haven't seen, there's been some turn lanes added and different information like that, that I'd, I'd like to look at to, to see what my thoughts are on that. So my opinion may change about the close proximity, just based on, I was concerned about the stacking. By putting those dual turn lanes in, you effectively reduce your queues by 50%. And so that can resolve the issue. But I haven't seen the data to-
Okay, so that's another one that between now and the next, when we have to make a decision, you'll give us an opinion on that.
Right. After I receive information or review.
The next issue is, is some of the, some of the engineering improvements. I'm just, I've said this before, I'm just very weary of a lot of these improvements. I don't know that, you know, the one that we talked about tonight where we're going to take that intersection with, I guess, is it Radnor Chester and Lancaster and turn it into a six-lane highway at that particular piece. To, to me, that's very problematic.
Prussia.
King of Prussia, very good. That, that's very problematic. I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, we, we, what we get is a, the, the intersection goes from a, you know, a D minus to a D, but that's not really much of a benefit if we have a six-lane, you know, a six-lane highway at that location. So I would need to see, and there are some elements that are included. I, I would need to see the kind of like pedestrian improvements, bike improvements, things like that, that give alternatives to traffic. And I'm just, I'm weary of these engineering solutions. Regarding the sidewalk, again, I don't see why with all the activity that's going on, I don't see why you would ask for a waiver of a sidewalk. I do see the sidewalk having a lot of benefit for a lot of reasons in that particular area along that stretch that goes from the southern entrance north. If it was a trade-off, the trail is much more valuable than the sidewalk. But given the scale of this and the benefits that the trail and the sidewalk I think would have for the property itself, my opinion is that they should both be installed. I think, I think you would benefit from it as much as the others. Okay, so that, that's it at this point. I guess in summary, we have, there's a lot of sort of big meat that we haven't, we don't, we haven't resolved those sort of big items. So I know I don't have enough to make a, a determination at this point. So, thank you.
Other commissioner comment?
Well, no, I guess.
We're going down this way, Rich. Sorry, you'll be next. Anyone?
No, I'm, I'm not going to go over any of the things that have already been mentioned except for sidewalks. I think you've got, you've probably got seven votes up here for sidewalks if this ever gets to a point where it's going to be voted on or rejected, whatever, whatever we do on it. Little by little in the township, we're, we're making it a more walkable place. We had Bentley Homes come in here about two years ago in John's, John Fisher's ward, and they agreed to put a sidewalk from, on the north side of Lancaster, from the intersection, not Heerdale, but a little bit west of that, all the way up about, I don't know, an eighth of a mile. And we have the Shimonie Road sidewalk. That's a huge improvement for, for joggers and walkers there. I'm hoping with the new law that was enacted, well, it's not new anymore, two years ago by our state legislature, we've got $5.2 billion in, in money for transportation grants over many, many years that we can, we can put sidewalks on roads here that we've never had before. So I hope you'll really seriously reconsider the, the thing about the sidewalks. And I didn't, I took notes on, on your opposition, Mr. Tweedy, and the reasons, and I, I couldn't find much that was very persuasive in any, any of that.
I'll, I'll just mention that in lieu of the sidewalk, we're getting the pathway out to Lancaster Pike because we can't put a sidewalk all the way out to Lancaster Pike. So we're getting this pathway that runs all the way under the Blue Route and all, which gets better access. So it's a trade-off of-
But, okay.
Do you put a sidewalk in front or do you run this?
We can talk about it, but it, we still have people that will want to go from the building to the Norristown High Speed Line or even up to where Chilton, it's not called Chilton anymore, and, and further up to the SEPTR R5 line. So I, I, I think we've got to look at that further.
Well, I agree with all the comments that all the commissioners have made, so don't want to repeat them. I appreciate the square footage at 475, removing in the right direction. However, everything we can do to make sure it is TOD, and that includes bicycles. You know, without the sidewalks and the bicycles are in the road and it's a six, six-lane road. That six-lane road will need islands of safety for pedestrians because you can't have six lanes without something in the middle for the pedestrians, just in case they need it. So that, it just gets in that. So if, if you can widen that road, you can put a sidewalk on that road. Also, obviously stacking is a big issue that we're going to wait for the traffic engineers to look at this. I also, I just want to make a comment that this is, this, this is completely out of process in the fact that we're looking at something new tonight. It's really unfair to, it's really unfair to a lot of other applicants. But I'll say this, that in fairness to this applicant, they've been here for a couple of years. And to me, it was worth my time. It's not worth, I'm not going to say it's worth the public's time, but it's worth my time to hear this. But, you know, obviously in the future, I don't want to see this again. I don't want to see these plans just pop up at a meeting. Oh yeah, it's, it's, it was A that's in your packet, but what's B, what we're going to show you. That's not going to happen again. So I don't want to see that happen again. That's a process issue. But I'm generally supportive of the direction this is headed. But, you know, we, you know, to echo Commissioner Schaefer's comment, you know, to make this work, to really be TOD and to get the benefit of TOD, it has to be mixed use. It has to have something other than office space. Should have either housing, you know, hotel or retail, something different. But I appreciate the direction that it's headed. And I, I really look forward to this getting resolved, you know, at some point, you know, hopefully while I'm still here on the board.
Again, I'm not going to repeat all the good comments from my fellow commissioners. This is really moving in the right direction finally. And hopefully we can make further progress with mixed use of some type. Although that, you suggest this is a by right development, the impact is still going to be very strenuous for the, the roadways around there. So if we could get mixed use where we can time shift, it would be a tremendous gain for the community.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm hearing, I guess, from all this is basically the applicant is abandoning or virtually abandoning the 533,000 square foot plan that was the subject of the planning commission and our caucus for this evening. I think that's what I'm seeing. And we have a new plan with, that will be 475,000 square feet roughly with some underground parking replacing the building that was there. So I guess we're still yet to see that. I've seen, just, I see it there. I saw a flash of it, but haven't seen anything else. So difficult to really comment. One of the questions I had was, all of these developments have a great traffic impact. So what is the impact of the traffic going north on King of Prussia Road? We've heard tales of, or we've heard stories from people who've come into comment, people coming all the way from King of Prussia, from where Roberts Elementary School is there at the bottom of that, you know, the, all the way at the end of King of Prussia Road by, right?
Upper Marion.
And, and from, from Upper Marion coming all the way through. Also, people coming off the Blue Route and going all the way through as well, as, as we talked about increasing the through lanes. So what's the northbound impact and how, what have we looked at as far as the traffic of people that aren't going to this site? And how does that relate to the traffic that's added by this proposed development? Want to speak to that?
John?
If you have any data on that, then let me know that.
The traffic heading north does get captured by the four intersections that we're proposing to include with traffic adaptive signal technology along King of Prussia Road up to Matson Ford Road and then to the east in that location. Again, the majority of our traffic wants to go toward Lancaster Avenue to the Blue Route and then east and west on, on Lancaster Avenue. There's, there's a regional problem with the underpass along King of Prussia Road. In my opinion, that can't be solved by one property owner. But I think it is a, it's an issue that does start to funnel traffic to two lanes on King of Prussia Road. But we're trying to work within the property that we have and, and some of the improvements that we can do from a traffic adaptive signal standpoint to mitigate some of those impacts.
So I think that the issue is that there is a, a bottleneck at the railroad and especially with increasing traffic in, along Lancaster Avenue, as we talked about, up to six lane, six lanes right there at Lancaster Avenue, that you're bound to get that much more traffic coming through. And it will affect not only the areas where the traffic light system is planned, making a right before, making, the, the lights that are by the Radnor Corporate Center there. But the concern is the area under the bridge and, and further north all the way up through, out through to the edge of the township. Second, I also wanted to talk, Steve Gabriel is here from Ritu, and Ritu reviewed just this scenario in his work back in January. So I was hoping Steve could talk about, I, one of the provisions in the report that, that Ritu did talked about six-lane double left or double right-hand lanes at Lancaster Avenue. And it was their view that it would be unworkable as I, as I recall. Steve, you want to, do you want to talk? Do you, do you have that? And do you recall what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do. Yeah, our, our work this past fall, we did make comment about what might be necessary in the way of improvements to the entire system, north of the site, south of the site, if larger scale developments that did not have a target of traffic neutrality would place on the system as a whole. The type, the scale of project and one site and one improvement as being described by the applicant right here was not what we were addressing. We were looking at something much larger in scope and, and saying that at, at that scale, there may not be the physical dimensions available to make all the necessary improvements as Commissioner Curly had been talking about. There just isn't the room for engineering solutions by and large. So this was, it was, it was really something very different from what we're talking about tonight.
Well, is, was it different? Because we're talking about the same thing. Six lanes at Lancaster Avenue at King of Prussia Road and additional lanes at Lancaster Avenue, in this case at least coming off of Lancaster, off of the Blue Route onto Lancaster Avenue. So that was contemplated in your review.
What, what, what we were commenting on was not only double right turn lanes but, and left turn lanes, but improvements perhaps at the, at, at three left turn lanes or right turn lanes necessary to accommodate significantly increased traffic levels over and above what might be by right, what might exist and might, might take place in order to balance not only the improvements that would be, not only the development on any particular site, but the improvements necessary to, to sustain them. Much, much larger scale, much larger scope than what we're talking about tonight.
Thanks, Steve. So back to Biomed. I guess, based on what we've discussed tonight, Nick, does, does your client have a sense of what the, these off-site improvements we're talking about, what the approximate cost would be? Is there, have you guys discussed that? Or you've obviously talked about some of these improvements. What would the cost of those be approximately? Any sense?
I'd have to defer. I don't, I don't know if we've really come up with solid numbers yet. You know, so, yeah, I mean, we can look at that. You know, I don't know what, what the relevance is, but we can look at it, Rich, and, and see.
Well, I, the, the relevance is related to the value of the property and the value of the property with the ability to build the improvements that we're discussing here. So recently Biomed filed an appeal for the property value in, at this location. And the assessment is reduced to roughly 16, 16 million and change, which would give it an imputed market value of somewhere around 28 million dollars. Biomed paid, what? Do you know what Biomed paid for this, the partnership that owns this property? According to the SEC filings, it was 89, 87 million dollars for just 89% and then-
Rich, you're not on topic.
Presumably.
You're not on topic, Rich. You're-
Presumably for the rest. So the topic is this. There's a lot of money at stake here. Biomed has 100 million or so in this property and they've just filed an appeal and said, and said that it's worth roughly 28 million and gotten relief and they're paying property taxes based on a 28 million dollar. So- paying property taxes based on a $28 million. So it seems that there is an impetus to dangle some, some goodies to the, to the township to allow this development to go forward. What would you say to that if somebody wanted to talk, if somebody made that assertion?
Mr. Booker, I really understand the relevance of your question.
The relevance, the relevance is that you're, you're in the hole on this building, on the site.
That is not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about a plan. We've heard month after month that traffic was an issue in the township.
We are here to talk about a plan. You're the one that brought up.
Please let me speak. You answered the question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer.
No, no, you're not answering the question. You're telling me why you're not gonna answer the question.
I'm gonna answer the question right now.
All right, well then answer the question.
Okay. Are you finished?
So, 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 now doesn't this, are you saying?
Can I answer the question?
Answer the question.
Thank you. Okay. What we're saying is, we spent months and months and months hearing from the town, as well as you, Mr. Booker.
That's right.
That traffic is a concern in this township. We've decided that it would benefit both the town and Biomed really if we went out and identified traffic improvements that we could do together. And that's what we did. And we have sat down with staff and went through every one of them and they agree with the traffic improvements that we have put forth tonight. And that's all we really need to talk about. We don't need you talking about our financials. Honestly.
Well, I think, I think it's relevant. I think it's definitely relevant.
Well, you can. That's true.
That is my prerogative and I'm the commissioner here.
So I think I've answered your question.
So I, I think that that was non-responsive, but that's fine. That's fine. I, my point is, my point is, I think is understood, that this property is greatly reduced in value today and that this proposed development would greatly enhance its value. So I think that we have a developer here who's willing to obviously work with and to, and to do more in the way of township giveaways to get, to get this through.
The...
All right, that's it, Rich. That's, we're done.
All right, just let it go. Just let it go.
That's, all right. Any public comment?
Can we have, can we have a comment?
I just said it. I don't need to echo in the room.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yeah.
For just staff comment. Just a couple of recommendations. I know that with the developer, I think we started off somewhere in the 900,000 square feet. I think originally in the project in the year, it's come down now to 475. What I'd ask the board to consider is a resolution denying the 533,000 square feet project that you direct the solicitor to prepare that for your next meeting. And then also for their 475 that the board would direct the applicant to prepare their 475 and submit it to the planning commission to go through the process again. So there'll be two motions I'd ask the board to consider.
Those are very reasonable.
Public comment?
Oh, Susan Stern, Wayne. I'm here tonight speaking as an individual member of the public, but also as a member of the planning commission. I don't represent the planning commission tonight. We recommended denial of the plan last week though, for the very reasons that Mr. Curly said tonight. It's not ready. There were very significant questions and concerns. When our solicitor hands us a memo that, you know, the opinion that the structure, you know, the, the parking's not compliant, that's not a plan we can support. So it's unfortunate, in my opinion, for your time, that the applicant made the decision to move forward with a caucus tonight. And I think that that unfortunate situation is underscored by the fact that they brought a new plan tonight. The purpose of the planned PLO district is to provide for modern laboratory and office establishments which provide for attractive, large site, low lot coverage development. The reason I say that, that is the purpose and application of the regulation for the PLO. And the reason that I share that with you is to underscore the accessory use regulation with regard to the parking structure, which is the point of concern that I brought forward a number of months ago. I actually raised it over a year ago, but it got attention finally in December. Mr. Knigley seems to be concerned that it came up very late in the process. That the parking structure is constructed when, for the purpose of eliminating, eliminating allowable surface parking. So I'm not quite sure what the 475,000 square foot plan does tonight because unless you can provide for all the allowable parking on surface and then put it underneath, which underscores the purpose of the PLO, which is to provide low lot coverage development, that was the intention here. It's a non-starter. So I'm really happy that the plan is, is starting to move in the right direction. I completely agree as a member of the public, as someone who drives on King of Pressure Road, you know, who lives and cares about our community deeply, deeply, that, you know, we get this development right. And bringing in mixed uses to, to help with the part, with the traffic is the right direction and recognizing that this is not the appropriate spot for 900,000 square feet or 500,000, you know, is the right direction. And I really want to work with the applicant in that regard. I, I do want to say as an elected official, to you as elected officials, I understand your job and how hard it can be. Believe me, I understand it. It really greatly concerned me tonight that you allowed the applicant to bring forth a new plan. Out of respect for your staff, I would ask you to not do that again, as Mr. Fisher said. They work so hard for us on planning. They work so hard for you at the Board of Commissioners. They, they put in a lot of time to prepare thoughtful comments. And what I could see in the back of the room tonight as the 475,000 square foot plan was being, you know, considered and proposed and I jumped in my car and ran over here. So I don't know all the comments that occurred. Your staff has been over here frantically reading and making notes and trying to be ready for what's going to happen next. And in my opinion, the correct response was, we will listen to your 533,000 square foot plan or you may choose to withdraw it. But to have engaged in a conversation about another plan that your staff did not have the opportunity to review in the professional manner that they, they conduct themselves is, is unfortunate for them. And, and I wanted to say that. So thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Diane Edgell on Spruce Tree Road. And I echo Susan's comments about, you know, having a discussion about something that really was not properly before you as the Board of Commissioners nor, nor on notice to the people who came to talk, you know, that it really, it sort of, it was, I think, a little bit of a bait and switch. And it, it, it deserves the public interest. And so hopefully tonight you will, you know, once the public comment is over, you will, with great dispatch, vote down the 533 square foot plan and request that the applicant proceed through regular channels as we all have to do in order to comply with the processes that we all value. You know, so I think that, that, you know, appearances matter and we have to, we have to act fairly and also appear to act fairly. And on that note, I just wanted to make two comments generally. One is, I think it was surprising to me to read at the, the listing for the, on the agenda for this item caucus preliminary approval, 145 King of Pressure Road. I would just maybe put it out there that, that this sort of is, begs the question or creates a stacked deck. Is it on for preliminary approval? Why isn't it on the agenda for preliminary disapproval? I mean, I think the appropriate phrase should be preliminary discussions. Let's, you know, let's call it what it is. If we're going to talk about something, let's talk about it, but let's not put out to the public that we're talking about approving something. Because I don't think that's what's happening here tonight. And I think that it would just make everyone feel like there's, there's more accuracy in the communications. And my, my final remark on that note, I don't want to touch anyone's computer, but I was hoping to just go back to the, the slide labeled zoning compliance site, site plan. Would somebody be able to just pull up that, that for me if that's okay? I just want to talk about appearances. No? Okay. Well, then I'll talk about it. It was an aerial view and it showed, it showed all the buildings and seven of the buildings had their roofs colored green, which, you know, fine, is just an artistic choice, but you know, to sort of the unengaged observer, when you're looking at this, it doesn't look like the coverage of building on that site. It looks like the coverage of half of that and that there's great big open lawns. So that was my only remark, that when people are putting together these presentations, you know, we get that you put the green on the roof to make it not look like a roof, but you know, we're gonna call you out on that when we notice it. So why not just be forthright and transparent about stuff like that? And if you want to put a color on the roof, make it gray, make it red, make it blue, but don't make it green so that people who give it a glancing look think that it's grass. And that's really all I have to say today.
I think that that was intended to be green roofs. That's why they had green. So it was part of their green space.
Public comment?
Hi, my name is Chuck Barber. I live in Villanova on 228 Hildale Road. I, I wanted to, just if I could just take 30 seconds to say something that's not related is, I'm so proud of this township, the job they did on the snowstorm. It was an amazing job. I'll tell you.
We had it earlier. Thank you.
And, and your staff should be commended because I, I, you know, I don't know, 12 or 18 hours later, I tried to drive through Lower Marion on, and it was almost in, I was glad I had a four-wheeled Toyota, a 4Runner to do it because, and Radnor roads were just perfect. So it was a great job. The other thing I wanted to mention is just, is the connecting of, of the traffic. There is some development being done on the other side of the Blue Route on Lancaster Avenue. And I would hope that there would be some continuity between the flow of traffic coming down either way on Lancaster Avenue along with this project. Because otherwise, you know, if we don't, currently on 320, coming down the hill towards Route 30, usually what happens, it's I think a five or six intersection there when they join. And most of the time, all the roads are free except 30 and 30's backed up to the law school, you know, up to, to the bridge. So I'd hope there'd be some integration of that in it. And the other, just the last item is, you can go from at least Ardmore out to Devon and the only place that you can't go on a, on a sidewalk is in front of the high school. And I know that this was a, to me, a big mistake when we put the high, that we didn't put a bicycle, you know, a sidewalk.
The state offered to put a sidewalk there and Radnor Township said no.
Yeah, well, you know, I think there were people in my neighborhood who had kids in track and they, you know, but it was a bad decision, you know?
Yeah.
So if there's money available, I would hope the township would reach out and try to finish that. Because when you finish this development and if people want to go over to the restaurants that are over, you know, that are over on, what's the road?
Radnor Chester.
Yeah, Radnor Chester Road. They may, we certainly don't want them walking through the high school. We don't, we want people that are not related coming onto the high school property. And so to have some way to finish in due course, you know, 10 years, I don't know, to, to be able to have those sidewalks in front of the high school would be very valuable so that people don't end up trying to take a shortcut through the high school and we end up having traffic that we don't want.
Thank you.
Dan Shury, Wayne. Biomed tonight, as far as I can tell, has taken about two hours in terms of a presentation of a project, or rather a plan that was never before the planning commission and according to Commissioner Fisher, not even included in your commissioner's packet. Couple weeks ago, proposed resolution was brought forward seeking to limit public comment at meetings. A statement was made to the press as follows from Jim Higgins.
Well, I think there's a, this is on topic.
It is not. You're reiterating stuff.
This is about, this is about the length of the presentation tonight. It is absolutely on topic. "Well, I think there's a general feeling among the board members that our meetings are going on too long," said Higgins. "We have some people from the audience that speak excessively long." When somebody comes before this board on a plan that was not put before the planning commission and not included in the packet, the correct response is for somebody on this board to immediately, immediately introduce a motion stating that this should be removed from the agenda. If Biomed wants to come in here and talk about a new plan, there's public comment. It's at the end of the meeting. You get five minutes per person. Talk about it then. Thought the comments made by, I presume, counsel for Brandywine were spot on. When you bring up new issues for the first time at a Board of Commissioners meeting that were not placed before the planning commission, it's not merely the public that's disadvantaged. It's anybody who had any involvement in watching this plan develop. It's a new issue. There's a process. So again, I was, I was, I was very surprised that once it became quite clear, and again, the representative from Brandywine, at least I presume he's from Brandywine, made that abundantly clear. This is new. At the beginning of Biomed's presentation, that people on this board did not immediately seek to have this pulled from the agenda. And to the extent Biomed wanted to speak at all on the project, directed it occur to the end of the meeting. Two hours tonight. Two hours. Incidentally, not the first time Biomed's been before this board. And we have commissioners daring to say to the press that it is the public that is causing these meetings to go impermissibly or unreasonably long. It's outrageous.
Thank you very much.
It's not quite, my five minutes have not elapsed. It's not quite as outrageous as somebody coming up here and saying, oh, I agree, or I support what George Beatty said. After George Beatty comes before this board and uses words like jihad and bully.
Stay on topic, please. We're talking about Biomed.
I'm not familiar with what actually was said by Mr. Knigley, Commissioner Spengler, but he made specific comments about agreeing with George Beatty. Well, he wasn't speaking at the end of the meeting as a member of the public. He was speaking up here during the Biomed presentation. And I thought that Commissioner Booker quite rightfully called him on that as to what he meant. And wow, it was amazing to see how quick that retraction was. So again, in the future, it's not merely, let's not do that again. In the future, please proactively, if someone has not gone through the planning commission with a plan, someone has not put in your commissioner's packet the plan, do not dignify that applicant with two hours out of a Board of Commissioners meeting to hear for the first time a plan that needs to go through the planning commission. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, board. Luke Clark on Midland Circle. I, I was frustrated because it looked like Biomed was trying to circumvent the planning commission, who spent two meetings, I believe, on this, denied it. And I was going to come up and say, I wanted to see a lot of deference given to that recommendation of denial. I'm on an advisory board and I appreciate the work that they do, that we do. So I don't appreciate coming in here with a new plan to tell the, to broach it now as opposed to going through the planning commission. And I appreciate Township Manager Zinkowski for ensuring that this goes back to the proper channels. Thank you.
Christina Peroni. The way we protect the township is, is parking regulations, parking and square footage. That's how we normally protect traffic. I was reading in this report by Mr. Rice that they were doing a calculation on square footage by saying it was on the net numbers. So if you have 1,000 square feet and you're allowed 200, for each 200 square feet, you need a parking space. They were, instead of using that 1,000 square feet, if the building's 1,000 square feet, they were saying it's only 800 because they were doing net. And I've never heard that before. Is that accurate? I've never heard, they, they're doing their calculations on net square footage, which gives them 20% more size of buildings they can have. So is that, could someone tell me, is that accurate? I've never heard doing it on net square footage.
Yeah, it's, it's in our code.
To do it net?
It's in our code. Under certain conditions like commons, open, common space within the buildings aren't counted. And then we also have some threshold of 50,000 square feet also.
But 50,000 square feet is the cutoff.
Kevin, did you want to comment on that? Just because you, you, you are the authority.
Yes, it's under the definition of building area. So when you're calculating the building area, it's the size of the building, outside wall to outside wall, and then 80% of that is what the calculation requires per code.
Outside wall to outside wall and 80%. Okay. Doing that calculation, I never saw what the new 475 and the number of parking spaces. I mean, I thought I was paying attention. Did we, did we ever hear how many parking spaces?
It's, they're gonna have to come back through the process.
Okay. The point was, the whole point is parking. And so it was really disingenuous to spend two hours without talking about the bottom line of the code, which is parking. And that's what limits the... line of the code, which is parking, and that's what limits the size of your building. So that was the main overreaching point. Also, I thought it was unbelievably disingenuous to go and say that a 475,000 square foot building that's all office versus a 475,000 square feet that's half office, half lab, has five more trips in 250,000 square feet. Other commissioners brought that up, I'm just making the point that it was very disingenuous, just like when they came forward initially and said, at 900,000 square feet, they can do it by right. They couldn't. We're down to 475, and I'm not sure if they can do that either. So I would really hope that you would, you would follow Mr. Zinkowski, I can look at Mr. Zinkowski, that you would follow his request to deny this plan, let's start doing normal procedures, deny this 533 plan, and get that done today. Just deny that. I would ask you to follow procedures and do that. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Matt Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue, and I'll just be brief. Taking you down memory lane, 2009, Nick Kniglia represented Biomed, we had a Planning Commission give relief for 475,000 square feet of lab and office. Obviously, the lab portion is a lot less dense in terms of traffic and impacts the neighborhood. Fast forward to March of 2013, your staff and this board elected to go forward with the must, which at the time was approaching 900,000 square feet. Incredibly overscale for Radnor Township. Just look at areas like Concha Hockin, and specifically King of Prussia now with the expansion of the mall, and see what that type of development does for traffic. It ruins the local area. You are the stewards of the township. You have a decision to make right now. You, you know, you can continue down this path of increased density, or you can go back to what the relief was in 2009, and maybe adapt it. Maybe today, there's another use. I heard Commissioner Schaefer say, maybe there's a use that could include a hotel pad or something that might mitigate some of the traffic. But let's, let's go back to where this plan started, and it, and it really has taken some twists and turns, some not for the, the good of the community. I'd also say, very generous that Biomed's willing to offer some additional money for off-site traffic mitigations, but why don't we just look comprehensively at the traffic in Radnor? And I know Mr. Booker has suggested there's, you know, potential to borrow money at a very low rate now. Instead of four lights, why don't we look at 40 lights and signalize them and make sure the traffic is flowing throughout the township at the most efficient rate? I, you know, I'm sure if you polled the township residents, they'd be willing to pay a little extra money, you know, maybe $90 a year, so we don't turn into a traffic, you know, nightmare like we've seen in other neighboring communities. Thank you.
Commissioners, just a point of correction, the 80% requirement is under definition of floor area and not building area.
Go ahead. Good evening, Phil R., Meredith Avenue in Rosemont, and a lot of good comments tonight. And I think, rightly or wrong, we've heard, we've heard it, we've spent two hours here, just three things I hope we take away from tonight. First, I'd like to support and acknowledge Commissioner Schaefer's comment, acknowledging their tribute to putting some thought and money into the trails that are right adjacent to their company for the open space and Greenways Network. As part of that committee that developed, helped develop that, that plan, I think it's a long way to get a good jumpstart on that, and I encourage, or I support her encouragement of their, looking beyond that one trail, just Lancaster Avenue, and going to the, to the nine, the three spots that are in the Plan 9, to make that not only for Radnor residents, but also for their constituents on that site. But secondly, two things, if, this, this is being driven by two things primarily, one's traffic, the other's mass and density. And I support Commissioner Curley's points about that. First is, I hope that very soon we get right the opinion about what's happening with that parking structure. I know Attorney John Rice is going to look at that and come up with the determination. I read it the same way he's reading it, I think some of you guys do the same, and, but if we get that right, then all of a sudden, the playing, the rules are set, and we don't have to keep coming back and forth. Let's see if we can get that part done. And the second is that, the idea of the traffic. Also, as Commissioner Curley mentioned, it seems, it's very surprising that there's only a few trips difference between the different uses. Looking at the parking that's required, there's about 1,500 to 1,600 spaces that are required, and somehow that only generates 600 trips in the afternoon and in the morning. I know there's calculations that govern that, but that seems kind of incredulous that less than half of the trips for all, for all that parking is required. So if we can get the traffic right, and we can get the parking structures right, all of a sudden, you start to have rules that will govern where this thing goes next. So thank you very much.
A lot of comments have been made, so I'll try not to repeat.
I did have some questions. I know generally, we're not allowed to ask the questions of the applicant in this public comment, even though we're a property owner withstanding here, but I wanted to throw out some of the questions, just so you could consider this when it comes back. One of the neighbors touched on this, but a fine point on it. I was wondering, are the green roofs that are shown on these plans being counted in any of the green area calculations? They're certainly shown that way on the exhibit, as was pointed out, but they're very close on the green percent, to 45%.
George, may I interrupt for one moment? I'm sorry for interrupting. Can we make sure that, consistent with what we said earlier tonight, that we get these questions and then George gets answers to these? Okay, thank you.
So were the green roofs counted in the green area, the 45% limit? I also wondered, were the green roofs considered in the stormwater management? There's been very few details about the stormwater management. I had a couple other global pictures. First of all, we hear all the time that Biomed has been at this for a long time, and they have been coming forward with many plans and sketches for a long time, I'll grant you that. But just because they have come forward with many ideas, none of which have been zoning compliant, in my view, it, they're trying to create a feeling, it feels to me like you all and we all are making them go through a long process. This plan that's in front of you tonight, I think, was filed in September. I think it's probably the biggest commercial development plan that I have seen in Radnor Township in some time. So for a plan that was really filed in September to be now here in March, it isn't really that long of a time. Just because they've had other ill-fated things, I don't think we should lose sight of that. The other thing that I see is, there are so many major issues on this plan, zoning compliance issues. The parking structure has been well discussed. I have another issue with the building length that I'll go into, that there are other major, major issues that are discussed on almost every other plan I've been involved on, that aren't even getting the light of day because so much time has to be spent on whether the plan's even compliant. What am I talking about? I'm talking about stormwater management. There's a huge amount of time spent on stormwater management on almost every other plan. I believe there aren't even percolation tests that have been submitted here for this. So we don't even know if the stormwater management plan is going to work. The other huge issue that I see on other plans is fire access. We're not even getting to that because there's critical zoning compliance issues. We have a parking garage with 1,500 spaces in it, at least under the 533 plan. If I read the plan right, there's a tunnel going into the, into one of the levels that's over, almost 200 feet long. There's been no analysis that I know of, of what's gonna happen. There's 1,500 cars down in there, under the ground, with very limited access. What's that mean for emergency responders? What's that mean for fire response? Not even getting to that because of the critical issues. On the traffic, it's been pointed out, I just don't see how the numbers can add up. You're talking about, under the 533 plan, 1,958 parking spaces, so that's how many cars are there. And I hear what John Witchner's saying, that not everybody comes at once, but to say there's about 2,000 parking spaces, and there's really gonna be that amount of traffic, just doesn't seem to add up. And the 7% transit, remember that Brandywine has a shuttle, they've got about, a population of about 5,000 people there, and they have about 67 users, that's about a 1%. Not saying it couldn't be more efficient, but that's a real-life example of how many people are using transit. The issue I wanted to raise about the, about the building length, that's also not even been addressed. In my mind, there's a lot of confusion about the atriums here that have been added. So the plan was revised substantially since John Rice wrote his initial memo concluding that the other plan had complied with the building length. This new plan, I think, actually made some of the buildings longer. For instance, what they're labeling here is Office Complex Number 1. The total length of this, according to their plan, is about 391 square feet. Building 2 is about 352, 52 feet. Building 3 is about 320 feet, and Building 4 is about 475 feet. The interesting thing is, this plan has these atriums, and it's a little confusing because on the plan view, it calls them one story, but when you look at their graphics, these things, I guess they're saying they're one story because there's no floors in between, but the height of these things is almost the same as the roof of the adjoining buildings. So there's a question in my mind, are these really part of the buildings? Are they separate buildings? And what does that do to the building length? You'll see on Building Complex 2, they've treated the atrium as a separate building, so they have three buildings attached. Because there's a rule, you can only have three buildings attached, and each building can be 160 feet. So depending on how you measure the atriums, you can see how they've done it here in Building 1A that they've called, they say it's a length of 153 feet, and they've included the atrium in that building. Well, I don't know why you include the atrium in that building, but not in the next building, and there's an inconsistent treatment in the plan all the way around. Either the atriums are separate buildings, in which case, if these were separate buildings, as they are here, there's five buildings, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so it violates the three-building rule, and it's too long. And then there seems to be arbitrary classification or placement of the atriums in the buildings adjoining. Here's a good example over here on Building 3B, you've got a building length of 159 feet right there, but they didn't include the atrium in that building, they've included it in the other building, and that adds up to just 160. So I think there's a lot of questions about that and whether that will comply. In your next agenda item, you're gonna be talking about, should, should the ordinances be amended? And there seems to be some concern that maybe you should rush to do that because there's a by-right plan. There is no by-right plan. You have an opinion from your solicitor that this 530 square foot plan is not by-right. I can't imagine how the 475,000 square foot plan is gonna be by-right. It was right here on the table, and it only showed 1% more green area. This plan allegedly has 45% green area. I don't know about the green roofs, but the sketch that was left here for the 475 plan says 46.4. So I don't see how they are using a parking garage for the, to eliminate the allowable parking. So I do not believe that the 475,000 square feet is gonna be a zoning compliant plan. I guess we'll have to see when it's filed, and it'll go through the process, but I think you should keep that in mind, that just because a lot of graphics are put up, that there are zoning compliant plans here, there has never been one submitted in all the time that Biomed has been at this, they've never submitted one yet. So I would assume the next one will not be zoning compliant either, so you don't need to be afraid that you need to rush to amend the PLO district, but I'll save that for the next comment. And I'll look forward to seeing the 475,000 square foot plan. We hope that we can see it, and we will be able to opine on the building length issues and the parking structure issues as we were before. Thank you.
John, where do we stand? You know, the main concern here is, is that the Biomed has a plan for 533,000 square feet, and we could turn that down and wind up in court and have the thing approved.
Well, this, tonight's a caucus meeting, so.
But I'm just trying to understand what the lay of the land is here, and the other thing is, is that there was a, there was a decisions only hearing board to permit 475,000 square feet of office and, and lab, which they could proceed on, and, you know, it could be argued in the court whether it has to be lab or could be office. And the other concern is, they could just go and come in with a building permit and just build with what they have now and what they can do now. So, you know, we, we went down the primrose path of trying to get the must, and we spent a couple years on that, and we didn't get that. And now they've come in with a plan for 533,000 square feet, and tonight, like at all different caucuses, they're amending their plan for 475. And does that have to go back to Planning Commission, or can we proceed with preliminary approval if we get a lot of these issues resolved with the staff?
It's gonna be up to them. You have, let's just back up on what's in front of you formally, which is the 533. So that's been, that was filed January 30th, that was the reason for the caucus tonight. They have another alternative, which the Planning Commission hasn't seen. That, in my view, ought to go back to the Planning Commission, let the Planning Commission have their say on that. I don't think it'll be a whole lot different, the staff hasn't looked at that. They gotta decide whether they want to keep their 533,000 plan alive, because if they do, you gotta make a decision on that in two weeks. One way or another. We should have that on the agenda regardless, and. Unless, unless they give you another extension to act on that, as revised till the end of April. But right now, you have a, an end of March deadline to make a decision on the 533. If they're gonna. Say, as revised, you mean revised in the sense that this new plan that we saw tonight, or no? They have a new plan, it has to go back through the process. That, well, they're, well.
Here's the way.
They're revising their existing plan, is the way I looked at what I heard. We can call it a new plan, but it's, it's, it's a reduction of the number of buildings. So. So it has to go back to planning anyway? It should go back to Planning Commission, yes.
So here's, I mean, the way I see it, there's no action, Bob, your suggestion drew support from the masses, but to me, there's no action tonight for us either way.
Correct.
They have a five, they have a plan before us, we will have a chance to speak on that plan in two weeks, where the applicant will tell us otherwise.
Right.
And then it's up to them if they want to choose to bring in another plan for 475. So to me, there's only one plan.
Right.
It's the 533,000 square feet, and in two weeks, we make a decision on it.
Correct.
So in, in two weeks, if they came in, if they came before us for preliminary approval.
I'm sorry, Bill.
If they come before us with preliminary approval in two weeks for the 533 plan.
You'll have to vote yea or nay on that plan.
But at that meeting, could it be amended to 475? Could the board amend it to 475 if they, if they so choose to do so?
The board could do that, yes.
Without going to the Planning Commission?
There's always revisions to plans. The Planning Commission has looked at that plan, and plans in the past have come to you. I think this is a significant enough change in it that the Planning Commission should get another look at this. There's some issues with the interpretation of the parking garage. I'd like to see, before you make a decision on either plans, what they're doing in terms of the parking garage and how they're eliminating allowable parking. I mean, that's a, that's a significant issue, and, you know, as we've said, and there's a disagreement on how to interpret that, it's not clear in terms of the, in terms of your zoning ordinance, how much of that you have to eliminate in order to do a parking garage.
But I'm trying to understand what the Planning Commission's going to do. They're not gonna do anything with the parking, we're gonna make a determination whether parking. We're going to make a determination whether parking will be done or not.
Well, what I heard was a different interpretation is going to be suggested tonight based on 15 percent of the allowable parking being removed.
Another thing that-
If the Planning Commission is not going to decide that, the staff is going to make a recommendation on that.
We will, we will make a recommendation to the Planning Commission.
But another big issue that the Planning Commission will probably opine on is the impact of the traffic improvements that have been proffered tonight. And that, that's pretty important. I mean, it's very important. So I, I mean, I can't see a world where it doesn't go back to planning.
So there's, so there's four people that are, at least four that are sending it to back, it's back to...
Well, we're not doing anything. This is caucus and we are not voting.
But it's, we're not going to support the, a revised plan coming through that doesn't go through the Planning Commission. So I don't think we have to talk about that more tonight.
I think, I think they need to follow the normal process. So that's submitting a new plan. You know, again, this is not a, this is not a change to a plan. This is a new plan. This is not adding 10 feet here or taking away 10 feet. This is different buildings altogether.
No, 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 I understand that, John, but they could also get a denial and just go move forward.
And Bill, you know what? Our job is to do that denial. If we deny something, they go to court and win. We've done our job. We, we can't do the court's job. We do our job. So I, you know, it's got to, let's do the process.
But I also recommend though, that, and I think this goes to the point, the board should formally have a resolution denying the plan. Because if we're concerned about-
No, we can't do that, Bob. It's not on the agenda for a vote.
Now, we just put preliminary approval on the next agenda.
It's on the agenda as a caucus discussion. If we took a vote tonight to take final action-
I'm not, I'm not saying to take an action tonight to deny, you would authorize the solicitor to come up with a resolution denying the 533. Because if the board is concerned about a lawsuit by them, have a formal resolution denying it with the terms that again are defendable against if we're concerned about a lawsuit. I'm not saying you make the motion tonight.
Well, I support-
But you, you should do that formally.
But the way, the way this works is, unless we get an extension, whether the board tells me or not to do a resolution, I will have a resolution prepared for the meeting two, two weeks from tonight. There has to be a resolution. If they require you to make a decision, you have to make a decision. And from what I'm hearing, it's going to be a decision that they're not going to like. So that's something I have to, between now and two weeks from tonight, unless we get an extension, they may say, "We don't want to go back to the Planning Commission." You know, they can make that decision. But you'll have a resolution, it'll be an agenda item unless we get an extension in time. We're under a 90-day clock, as you know, that we've got to make it, you have to make a decision within a certain period of time where the plan is deemed approved. So that runs out the end of this month. So you'll, unless we get an extension, which would tell me then that they're going to go back and present their, whether you call it a new plan or revised plan, they're going to present that back to the Planning Commission. And then ultimately, it'll work its way back to you. But I don't know that they presented all the traffic improvements to the Planning Commission. There's some other issue with the garage they want to present. I think the Planning Commission ought to take a look at that before it comes back. And if the board's, you know, happy with the, with the less dense plan, then you can act on it then. But it's in there, unless one of the attorneys over there wants to disagree with me, it falls in their court, it will be back here for a decision in two weeks, okay? Or it'll be back sometime in April.
Yeah, but John, one other thing. If we accept a reduction in the building square footage of 15 percent for, for underground parking, isn't that going to be precedential? Isn't that going to set a precedence that other people have been, who are going to use in the future? We've already seen it with the CICD. Okay. The four-
Every plan's going to stand on its own. You know, there have been a lot of ordinance interpretations over the last 10 years that this board has changed or ignored. Other boards have changed or ignored. There have been plans approved. We've heard arguments throughout this process that, for example, Brandywine is arguing against certain interpretations that they've gotten the benefit of. That's been the argument by Biomed. We want to do what Brandywine has gotten in the past. So, you know, let's, this is a, something that just came up tonight. I think it goes back, if they've got some other way to interpret the zoning ordinance that lets them do what they want to do, then we'll deal with it. And you'll have a, you know, decision from the Planning Commission, you'll have a interpretation from the staff on that issue.
You'll be in contact with the applicant, see what's happening. Let us know.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any sense to table C and D? In my opinion, there is not urgency on this, that this has to happen tonight.
We're done.
I would table D, but not C.
Aren't they the same thing?
No.
My, my sense is that they're both important and too important to start at 10:15. And there is not an urgency that we need to resolve them tonight.
Okay, well, I-
I disagree with that.
I want to get them over, we can just discuss them. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this. We're just giving direction at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we're two. I mean, is it, we're supposed to come in, we got to cancel one meeting, we got to cancel another meeting, you know?
Mr. Gabriel, please.
As Commissioner Spengler, as Commissioner Spengler noted, we were, we requested to put together a proposal to you to amend the PLO back in mid-January. It was on two agendas, January and February, weather canceled it, and so we're here tonight. I'll try and keep this very brief and then leave questions and details to your questions. The approach that we were proposing, and that was also a request of the board, was to put together a, an overlay to the PLO zoning district to add mixed-use development as an option, as another use within the PLO zoning district and apply that to all the properties. Other options could be to amend the PLO, to create a whole new zoning district, or even go with something like the must. Really, there's not a lot of difference between, at least from our perspective, on any of those options. But we just think the overlay helps to make it very clear and differentiate mixed-use development from the other two permitted principal uses in the PLO. And it also allows the board the flexibility of either expanding the PLO zone or the mixed-use option, or shrinking it simply with a change to the map, to your zoning map. So that's why we went with that, with that particular approach and have recommended that to you in our proposal. Let me quickly just run down the goals of what we want to accomplish with this amendment. First and foremost, as we've been hearing all night and in the past, address traffic. And we've talked about traffic neutrality as a standard that we would shoot for. Promoting redevelopment that results in value to property owners as well as to the community. And I think many of you have talked about that tonight, as that interrelationship of different kinds of uses that really adds value to, to their community. Redevelopment that, that also then is a set of interrelated uses that support one another and make each use as, as good as it can be. Add permitted uses perhaps that would even have the ability to serve some underserved areas, uses that may, may be beneficial to have more of within the township. Also in the amendment, to address some of the ambiguities we've talked about throughout this process. Parking, building lengths, building connections, those sorts of things. And then design elements that would be compatible with surrounding development. So we're talking about similar kinds of massing, but also promoting green space within that development. So those are the goals that we're trying to achieve within the amendment. We did, since, there's been a passage of time, almost two months since we submitted our proposal, we put together four-year packets tonight, a second timeline and to help streamline the drafting and then review, review process, to get it to the board for its consideration for adoption, amendment, or changes. The, the original timeline was 270 days, quite a long time. A lot of meetings were part of that schedule. But there has been lots of discussion about the PLO with regard to Brandywine or with Biomed. And so we've put together a second timeline that shrinks that process to 100 days, essentially giving, giving us about a month to draft an amendment and then for this board to introduce and put it on its way for review by the Township Planning Commission, the County Planning Commission, for recommendations back to you. Just one meeting for each of those boards, Township and County Planning Commissions. Obviously, there could be more meetings if, if they required that. That's it in a nutshell. But we'd be glad to answer questions, talk about the differences or the two timelines, however you'd like to proceed.
Well, I just quickly, I just want to say I support the 100-day timeline. I think we've been dealing with this for several years and we all really agree with the concept, the big-picture concept, that adding uses to that zoning district, that zoning classification, or if we do a zoning map, whatever we do, makes a lot of sense. So anything we can do to, you know, and I believe that this has already been done. This is nothing new to, to me. The fact, to make, making like a must-like district has, has been done before. We know we need it for that site. We know that laboratory, office, laboratory space is no longer used. Let's just go ahead. Let's get it done, streamline it, get it through the process. I, I don't know if the public will push back. If they push back, we slow down, but we do-
John, why don't you make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll move to authorize-
A second.
He can make a motion. And you can amend it if you want.
Well, we'll get on the table.
Let's get it on the table.
You talk about fairness and-
Let's hold off for a moment. Let's hold off.
There's nothing wrong with making a motion. If you want to amend it, you can amend it.
No.
Traditionally, we like to hear from everybody and then we make a motion.
Hold back. Anyway, that's my comment. I, I don't want to belabor this. This is not that complicated to me. I know that the detail is complicated and I know can get complicated, but I think to get that process moving, if it takes more than 100 days, and it does, but we should set a goal of 100 days.
All right. So my thoughts, the, the concerns I had with the previous attempt at this were complexity. I thought it was discriminatory. I thought the mechanisms were inadequate. And I thought it would result in bigger rather than, be worse rather than better. No action would have been better than the past must, in my opinion. This, what Steve outlined in his proposal to us, it's the concepts, which I like. It wasn't just right into the details. So it's that idea of moving from general to particular. There's a choice element, which I also like, because I think that respects people's property rights. He's identified the appropriate variable, which is traffic. It includes all the PLO. It addresses parking, it expands use. And the fee is reasonable at $25,000. The schedule of six months is good. Now, that's six months, that's the 100-day, and then three months after that likely. So six months from now, we could be in a position to make a decision on this, is the way I'm interpreting what you provided us. So I, I think that's appropriate. The things that I would need to see for me to support it, I need to see simplicity. The last one was much too complex for me, so it has to be simple in a way that is easier to understand. I'm willing to accept bigger buildings. I don't know, I think that we have to make that decision as a group because I think to do, to control the traffic the way that we want to control the traffic, the buildings are going to get bigger. The massing is going to get bigger. That, to me, is a trade-off I'm willing to accept. That, to me, traffic is the problem in that area. Bigger buildings with less traffic is an acceptable trade-off. Couple of lines in it, like things that I won't underst, won't, if it's, if it's over-restrictive of property rights, if it's exclusion, if it excludes families, and if it's too complex, then I would, then I would imagine not supporting it. So in conclusion, I think that it's prudent for us to proceed and it's prudent tonight to make a recommendation to have them proceed. The one key thing that I think we have to do as a board is we have to meet, we have to be the starting point where we give concepts. We communicate concepts to him, to Steve, and then Steve takes those concepts through the rest of the board. Not draft ordinances for us, just concepts. The things that we want to see in the ultimate document that's given to us six months later, we communicate them as bullet points as a group. You assemble them all and then you take that, and you, and you take that through the township process.
Good.
That's it in a nutshell.
I'm very supportive. I'm looking forward to someone making a motion that we could move forward with your proposal as it's presented to us.
So moved.
I'll second that. There are two things, two very important things I just want to make sure are addressed in this. And they're, they're really sort of sticklers. The first is the traffic neutrality. Great, love that that's the driver. Love that that's going to drive the massing. However, to have a determination of neutrality, you have to compare it to something. And that's the, that's the hard nut to crack. So I really hope that in your draft, there is some well-defined, very well-defined, can't-play-with-it mechanism for an impartial determination of what we're measuring against. And it has to be, you know, impenetrable. Because that's where you're going to have all your fights, about what the actual by-right is that you're measuring against.
Yep, agreed.
Can, can I, can I speak to that point when you're done? You can finish, but-
Okay.
So I think it has to be exactly the opposite of that. Sorry about that, Elaine. But the reality is, I don't think you can make an impenetrable one. I think that when you make an impenetrable one, it will become very, very penetrable. And we will spend, so I think what you do is you simply take uses and you, you allow you, you allow substitute uses that are by definition less traffic-intensive. And then we never argue about what the baseline was. All we argue about is that the, the expanded uses are by definition less problematic.
But that doesn't, that doesn't help you in determining density? Because just use, how much of that use? That's what the point is.
Oh, you guys are getting into the particulars now.
Anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So there you have it. You're going to have a great time putting this together.
Yes.
My second point is in the, the concept of neutrality. When we say traffic-neutral, we mean traffic-neutral in a global sense for the site. I don't think any of us would be satisfied with neutrality at rush hour. So we want improvement at rush hour and neutrality globally. Is, I, I hope that's not being too esoteric, but I, I mean-
No, I understand.
We want improvement in the numbers. If it's just neutral at rush hour, it doesn't help us. It needs to be better at rush hour and neutral overall. So those were my only two personipity little things that I want to make sure are in there.
That helps.
All right, anybody else?
Are you saying better than what is there now?
Better than by-right. Better than by-right.
Not better than what's there now?
On any of these sites.
Okay.
Which is tricky.
And that's, yeah, the standard is what we've been arguing about a lot, so.
I, I think the baseline is very important. I won't go any further than that. Penetrability or not. But that's basic. I'm in favor of this and I'm, I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see you reduce your time from 275 days to 100. That's, that's great.
Yeah, and I, and I think they're probably still almost interchangeable in the sense of when additional discussion or meetings might be held if that's determined to be necessary.
Okay. Any other, commission comment?
I just, I just want to get clarity. Don, you would like a session where the board is giving the big, the big concepts to Steve? And when, should we be doing, if we approve this tonight, should we be doing it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Meaning, meaning not tonight because that's substantive and-
Right.
But we need to, we need to direct Steve so we can have the discussion about the sort of things. My vision for the solution is probably different than yours, so we have to see where the consensus is so that Steve can take that and move forward.
Okay, I think that's a good idea and I think we should prepare for that for the next meeting. Come prepared with your thoughts. And that way, we do actually get a launchpad here instead of us delaying it, so.
I like that.
John? All right. Well, I'd like to make a few comments on this proposed motion here. I guess it's motion in absentia and second it. With respect to the PLO, we've heard a lot of myths about the PLO. We've heard it's from the 70s. It's not from the 70s. The PLO we're working with was actually almost exactly 22 years, it's a 1993 ordinance is one we're looking at, 1993. It's not, it's not that old. Now, the PLO, and what's touched on earlier today, the stated purpose of the PLO is for large-site, low-lot coverage development in areas where traditional business development is inappropriate. So the history of this and the concept espoused by the PLO was always not- not to have traditional business development, it's also to strengthen and diversify the township's tax base, and it's also to be used in areas compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Now, think about this site, the surrounding areas are Villanova University, Radnor High School, residential areas, compatible uses is not mixed-use, office, retail, hotels, and, and other development. Now, I, I have to admit that, like other politicians, I've evolved on this issue, I've, I've come full circle, I, I thought that there was some benefit to a must, and after spending a great deal of time on this for the last two years, I'm of the view at this point, that the PLO actually is the appropriate zoning for our area, that a large-site, low-density area with a lot of green space, that is commensurate and appropriate for the area, is what we should be doing, and I, I disagree, mainly because we've already seen it in just a brief discussion about how do we do a must, how do we even decide what traffic-neutral is, how do we get even our developer, who this would be aimed at, to, to do this? The developers already indicated that they're not happy with, with the hotel, for instance, we, we talked about this two years ago, so, after thinking about this, and studying the issue, studying the history, knowing the area intimately, my view is that the least, and all things considered and on balance, the PLO is the best zoning for the area and should remain.
Any member of the public have comment? All those in favor of the motion?
No, I'm here for the public, please don't vote yet. Diane Edgell, I'll talk fast, I think that it's great to put this on a fast track, my only concern was that, you know, sort of looking over the proposal, the first two items, interested parties review of draft PLO amendment, meet with biomed representatives and review draft, meet with brandy wine representatives and review draft, and then there's really not, like, any place where the public gets into this anymore, I know, I know Steve, that you've been very involved, but I, I think that, you know, the public turns over, people's attention spans turn over, and I think it's important to put, like, another opportunity in sort of the, the beginning part to, to get the public re-engaged about that, and I would request that. And then my only other concern with this timeline is that it ends up putting sort of the big action right at the time where everyone from the township is down the shore, or headed away, that we're, we're talking about doing something, you know, very important at a time which were notoriously sparse on public attention, you know, certainly it's, you know, people make choices about where they're going to be in the summer, and what they're paying attention to on the township website, but just to, to put that out there, that keeping in line a number of days, also sort of, you have to sort of look at, at what day you end up at, because if you end up at July 5th, that's not really creating, I think, a very transparent or collaborative environment for the public to weigh in in the ways that they have the opportunity to. And just on that final note, I think, you know, in the future, if, if there's a planning committee, committee action on something that's on the agenda for discussion, it would be really good for the public to know that the planning committee voted it down, just be nice to put that on the agenda, maybe you guys can think about directing the township staff to do that as well, that if there's some board recommendation on something that you guys are considering, let the public know, what the experts, what the people that you've appointed to, you know, weigh in on this have said, that's all I've got tonight, thank you.
One additional question here, Steve, how much are you going to utilize the prior work that you've done, I mean, you did spend some time putting together an outline for a must, I'll call it must 2.0, so, are you, is that usable, is that going to be expanded upon, or is that going to be scrapped and a whole new, are you proposing?
No, I think, I mean, the, the work we did in the fall with, I mean, the, the meetings with residents, property owners, the traffic counts that we performed-
And you did a, a matrix, and you did-
And the, and the matrix was-
Don didn't, Don didn't think too much of it, but there was some, there was some data there.
Well, and-
Leave Don alone, just talk to it.
And, and the matrix was of, was, was of different combinations of these other uses, to see how those might impact and hopefully reduce traffic as compared to a fully office development.
Right, so my, so my question is, what's, what is, what's the difference, what are you talking about?
Well, what we're, I mean, what we're talking about now really is, is putting that into, into the, into the language of a zoning ordinance to say, okay, we know what these uses are that don't generate the traffic that a full office development does, let's make those part of, if they make sense for the township, let's make those part of the list of permitted uses within a mixed-use development. So, yeah, we'll be, we'll be making use of that, of that work, for sure.
Is there, and it going to be any review, I mean, we take this as for granted, that laboratory is not, no longer necessary, and I just reject that as a premise, what data do we have, that laboratory space, and I had one of the people in our, when we did a town hall meeting, I was, people in the biomedical sciences said that there's plenty of, of use for laboratory space, and that there, there would be people to lease it if it was built.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't given up on laboratory space as a, as one of a set of uses.
Yeah, we wouldn't remove laboratory, we'd be adding others.
It sounds like we're eliminating it.
Steve, presumably, the, the mix of uses would be scaled to maintain the initial, it would be mostly laboratory and office, with the, the mixes being accessory uses, that's the way I envision it, so it isn't like we're changing the zoning, we're augmenting it, as I see it.
Yeah, the mixed, the mixed-use part of the, or, and a mixed-use overlay, that, that permitted use, I, I think the, you know, the concept that you had in, in the must, of certain percentages of different, of these different sets of uses within the mixed-use, is a way to still, still size those individual uses in a way that they interrelate well. So, yeah, we'd still be incorporating office slash lab as one of the permitted uses within a mixed-use development.
Are all those in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes six to one?
Next item is the Resolution 2015-39, which is a plan revision for new land development, 215 Strafford Avenue.
Wait, did we vote to table the, item D?
We can't, let them do this.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Well, planning module, that's for sewers, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, so it's, this is applying for-
205 Strafford Avenue, sorry, and I just spoke with our engineer, township engineer, and our director of public works, do you want to address what, what we should do, we have to vote on this.
Yeah, this is, this is the planning module for land development for 205 Strafford, for the four additional homes that are being put there, standard DEP planning module, the board must pass a resolution prior to the planning module being submitted to the PA DEP for review and approval, and that's what's before you tonight.
All right, I move the passage of Resolution 2015-39.
Do I have a second?
Public, commission discussion, public discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes six, seven to zero? Nay, passes six to one?
Oh, you're going to vote against sewage? Voting against sewage?
Yeah, that's right, he wants this.
All right, we're going back to item D.
So, what are we going, what are we going to do, table that?
Discussion in regards to changing the zoning parameters in the PLO ordinance, as per the solicitor's memo dated January 23rd, 2015.
I thought we were going to table this.
Yeah, in my opinion, this is that discussion that we have that gives guidance to-
Yeah, all right, well, make a motion and table that.
Well, what, what I will say is that I disagree with the interpretation on the 90-degree facades, that's, that's not the intent, so, while I agree with John on, on the parking structure, I disagree with other parts of his, of his memo, and I think that, you know, it's a gray area that other people will, reasonable people can differ on this, so I would never want to incorporate this into our ordinance.
Can I, I'd like to move to table this, since there's, there will be a revised plan filed.
Commissioner comment?
So, are we table, hold on, are we tabling until next meeting, or when?
We don't even have to table, it just says discussion.
Okay.
Tell us, whenever we have a new plan to talk about.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero?
That is the end of public works.
Okay, finance and audit, personnel administration?
No report.
Parks and Recreation?
Yes, the last Parks and Rec meeting, they made a motion to, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that a student intern be added to the Parks and Rec Board, this would be a non-voting member, but they thought that because the programs, so many of our programs affect youth, it might be useful to have a youth member on the committee, I think it's a great idea. So, feedback? Direct staff to move forward?
A high school student or college, high school student?
Yeah, high school, and, you know, we got into the whole thing about, does it have to be someone from all the private schools, and we said no, it's not overcomplicated, Radnor High School. And, oh, I thought we, they said we'd wait from them, oh, they said both, I forgot that, Luke, you were there, also a college student from one of, one of the local colleges.
I, I don't think we need this, college student, a regular student, I mean, it's our park board, two members of the school board are there.
Seems unnecessary to me, but I'm not going to stop them if they want to proceed.
The Parks, Rec Board, they kind of wanted to do it, there were kids, there were people there from the, from the ninth graders, and it was moved, and they, they seemed to want to do it, I don't think it hurts anything.
Yeah, I like the idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
So, you have a, a majority yes on that?
John, you-
Well, I think we need to, is this board composition in the administrative code, and do we need to amend that by ordinance?
Well, we don't make them a real, a regular member.
It's just like being a member of the public showing up.
Yeah.
Every meeting.
I mean, that's what the Board of Health has been doing for years.
John Rice, you have an opinion, is it a bad idea, good idea, I mean?
Let me, can I get back to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be a non-voting member, but I just think, the, the reason I bring this up is-
Two non-voting members.
Yeah, but the thing is, these boards and commissions are described in the administrative code, and that, I believe that board is one of them, and if it is, then technically the language in that zoning, in that ordinance needs to be corrected to reflect the change.
I'll let the board know once I look at the administrative code.
All right, is that it, under Parks and Recreation? Library?
No report.
Public Health?
I actually, I would like to make two announcements for under Public Health, as many people know, we had another tragedy in our community this last week involving a youth, and the stress that, that caused that, a stressful situation, and, you know, stress in our young people and the mental health in our adolescents is a huge issue in this community, it's an issue that we need to address, it's, you know, growing up today is not like it always has been, it, you know, with the, between the high-stakes testing and the constant barrage of tech, of IT, it's, it's a tough environment, and our schools, and our police, and our county have really taken this, all these issues seriously, and there are two very important events coming up that I wanted to call attention to, so that people can come out and learn a little bit more, and educate themselves about how to deal with this increase of stress on our youth. The first is an event at Radnor High School, which is on Wednesday, March 25th, and it's in the evening, and it is, it focuses on substance abuse in our, in our student population, it's put on by Alliance for Safe Kids, which is a high school parent and staff organization, and the county, and it's called NOPE, which stands for Narcotics Overdose Prevention and Education, so again, that is on Wednesday, March 25th, in the evening, and for more information, you can either get on the high school website, we'll get on the high school website and look up the NOPE presentation. The second event is going to occur in April, it's on Monday, April 27th, at 7:00 PM, which is also coincidentally a Board of Commissioners meeting, but this is much more important, and it will be at Brainmark College, and that is a presentation that's being put on by the DMX Foundation and Mainline School Night together, and that is, they are hosting Patrick Kennedy, who is a very well-spoken and famous speaker on these mental health issues, and he will be addressing mental health in our youth and be taking questions on that. So, again, that one is April 27th at 7:00 PM, and you can get more information about that either on the DMX Foundation website, or on Mainline School Night's website.
Just to add, DMX is a Radnor organization.
Another Radnor organization that was born out of another tragedy of a, a youth in our community, so.
Old business, new business?
I got a, one thing, so, we've got some decisions to be made regarding stormwater, so, for that, I think we need three pieces of information, one is, I want to see the amount of money that the fee raises per ward, I want to see how much it raises per watershed, and I'd like to see the percent of it that's commercial versus residential, so I had asked Bob to provide that, so I don't know if others feel differently, but I think those are three key pieces of information that we need, need to make.
Is that data easily had, or is that, that sounds like fairly complex?
It's going to take some time to be able to put that together.
Is, do we need, do we need resources to, like, additional resources?
Bill and Steve and myself met today, and Bill's going to start looking at how, how much time that's going to take to be able to go through and do that.
Because I know that was a big concern when we instituted the plan, that, the, the data piece of that is very expensive, and doing it once is one thing, but doing it continuously, I mean, it's both, both are expensive, so I just want to make sure that, you'll come back to the board with a recommendation of how to do this and what the cost will be?
We will do that.
Okay.
One question for Commissioner Curley, just so we have residential versus commercial, the way our, our fee is broken down, it's single-family residence versus ODP, other developed, so the other developed properties includes commercial, institutional, when, when you say commercial, do you, would that exclude nonprofits, or is it just everything that's not residential?
I don't know the answer, Steve, and part of it right now, Tim, because it's so late, I'm not thinking as clearly, but essentially, my concern is that part of why we're doing this fee is because we're capturing those that would otherwise not pay, and, but I think we're, we could be paying more as residents, because it's non-taxable, so if we're only getting 15% of it from, if, if 85% of it comes from residential, then as a township, we're paying more to get 15, you know, we're, than to get that 15%, so I want to see how much comes from residential, and how much comes from non-residential, so I can make that policy determination, does that answer it for you?
And ward, how are you going to do wards, I mean, we're just changed the wards, it's going to be a tremendous job to figure that out.
I would be surprised if it's a tremendous job, these people know more about it than me.
They don't know what the wards are, they don't know what the wards are.
The wards are on the map that we just sent to the, we approved to send to the county.
I just, anyway, they're going to get back to us with the process and cost of doing it, because I think you're talking about GIS mapping and finance, and-
No, I'm, I don't know that you have to be talking about GIS mapping, and-
That's what a ward-
Yeah, but you can be, there's, there's a host of ways to estimate those things, and if, and I wouldn't want us to spend a fortune or a significant amount of time to do it, I think we can, we can get information on that relatively easily.
And why is the ward breakdown relevant?
Because I, I want to see that, where, I want to see where the project money is being spent, and I want to see that it's distributed fairly and evenly.
Yeah, well, the problem is, is that we just reapportioned and added students and the campuses, you know, and we took your ward and doubled it almost, you know, so you're, you're now going, you're going to be the top income guy on the, and I can tell you that right now.
I just want to emphasize that, that Don has not directed staff to, to have them use their resource time to get this data, they're going to come back to us with a methodology, and who's going to do it, and how it's going to get paid for, because if, the staff already have enough to do, I just want to make sure that they come back to us with a method, and tell us how it's going to happen.
Okay, I don't have any objection to, to that.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that-
I'm pushing back that this is going to be problematic, or-
Well, you should know that, at our next meeting, the Stormwater Advisory Committee is going to have a proposal in front of us, to retain an outside firm for 190- is going to have a proposal in front of us to retain an outside firm for $196,000 for a two-year period to do what you're talking about, plus a GIS mapping, plus collection of our stormwater fees from all of our taxpayers, plus recommendation for three projects that we should look at and decide to go forward on. So maybe we should just bring this back on the 23rd of March and go over it at that time.
So, I mean, fit it into, if there's other similar activities happening, fit it in. But in order to make the kind of policy decisions that are coming my way, I need those three pieces of information.
Staff will come prepared with that, their piece, methodology, how they would do it versus us outsourcing that function?
Well, why would the staff do that if you're paying especially that kind of money? And, and also, it's ridiculous, we have two years' collection of fees, two years. And we don't even know what projects we're going to do, what they cost or what the benefit is. It's, and, and now we're going to hire another consultant, we're collecting money just to pay it out to consultants and getting nothing done. It's, this is the worst, the absolute worst program I've ever heard of.
I actually agree with you, Rich.
Don't say that.
And I have talked with key members of the Stormwater Committee and I have brought them around to a position of instead of putting all their efforts on outside studies, or studies, give us some, give us some meat, give us some projects that we can look at and decide if they're worth going forward for and then vote on them. And that's going to happen on the 23rd. We're going to get three projects, so you'll have your chance that night.
And just, just so you know, when they do the real estate transfers, the old fourth ward, the old fourth ward that went into the third ward, they still put on the list as being in a fourth ward. They're not in a fourth, I mean, it's a mess. Wards are a mess, Don. It's a tremendous job.
Okay, then just give it to me by watershed if that's problematic. That would help. Doesn't have to be though, John. All right, it can simply be area.
Public participation?
Wait, is there new business?
Wait, I have a new business. I just have an announcement to make. This Saturday at the library, there is a workshop on beautifying your backyard with rain gardens to help with stormwater and to increase habitat. It is put on by Radnor Conservancy, Radnor Bird Town, the library, and this township. Joint effort. And again, it is this Saturday, I don't know what the date is, but this coming Saturday at 10:00 AM at the library.
I just wanted, the new business for me was to, I have to correct something I said. Commissioner Curly corrected me. He did not, in fact, impart any criticism of the former Ritu.
Yes. I reminded Rich that I'm capable of criticizing our consultants on my own.
He meant, he meant, he was criticizing the prior, prior must, so not that one.
It would be helpful when commissioners have discussions, they don't make comments about other commissioners and what they said. Any public...
Yes, that would be good. President Spengler, you're the main offender.
Mr. President, if I can just briefly, just again, I want to thank and echo the comments the residents have made about our public work staff, the police, and then our office staff too with the storms, with the time they spent to handling calls. Again, public works with the hours they spent. Again, I invite anyone, if they'd like to ride along with our public works guys, just to see what they do and how they handle within traffic, where people park on the streets, which I find it interesting too, that their driveway is perfectly fine to put their car in, but they decide to leave it on the street. It's interesting, but to see how some of those trucks maneuver in and out of those areas and what they do. They do a tremendous job. And again, I just want to thank all the staff and the police for what they do with their vehicles getting through and responding to calls to everybody. And they just do a tremendous job. Thank you.
Here, here. All right, public participation?
Point of clarification. How did we leave on this agenda, it says caucus, final approval for Villanova? Can someone tell me how we left that?
Well, it was just a caucus and it'll be on the next agenda for approval or denial. But they followed all, we checked and they followed all the rules and, you know, the staff, they, we already approved it preliminarily. So a lot of things you talked about, we already approved. This is the final, where we do the administrative stuff. So they're up to date on administrative stuff, so as far as I know, it's ready to be approved at the next meeting.
Okay.
Also, Christina, they, they promised that they would fix the stormwater in the field.
Right.
With the next project.
Right. Yeah, that was...
And that will have to be a condition.
That was just a public comment. That was not, they did, they made a public commitment, there's nothing in writing, it's no part of this project.
Well, then I'm going to vote against it.
Fine, vote against it.
No, someone gives you their word, they mean it.
Well, is it going to be written on the, is it going to be written on the, on the resolution?
John, will you make sure that's on their...
No.
I'm sorry, they made a promise.
Why wouldn't we?
Would resolve the stormwater pipe in Pike Field as part of their next development, as part of the CICD.
He said he, they said they would.
Yeah, he said he would do it.
Because they weren't compliant, I think.
Chris Paulsley stated it.
They weren't compliant with the stormwater and they said they would fix it in the next one.
I didn't hear that that's what they said. I did not hear them say that they would resolve the stormwater.
Yes, they did.
Well, no, I'm sorry, they said that they would address...
I heard they would address, something to the effect of address elements of it, not resolve it.
They said they were, the planning commission was brought up and they, they talked to them and told them they would address it at the, at the next, next day. All right, go ahead.
There should just be a point of clarification on that particular issue because it seemed kind of vague and it's another big building where we're letting them go for non-conformity, where they're building, they're ripping down the building, building a bigger building and we should know, okay, they're not conforming to stormwater, are we going to hold them accountable to it? My last point is that it, I think it would be tremendously helpful, as Diane said, before you let anybody come up, like an applicant, to have a report from your staff. Because your staff does so much work and you're not getting the benefit of hearing what their issues were. So if you could even just read planning's comments out loud, planning was concerned about parking, planning was concerned about this, planning agreed, planning thought they approved all code, you know, that would be helpful information for the public.
I just, I know you know this, but the packet we get has everything that planning says, it has everything that our staff says.
It's just for the public.
And we all, and the public can read all of that too. It's all online.
I, I recognize that, but it would be really helpful on these big plans, I'm not talking about everything, on these big plans that involve a lot of community development, it would be really helpful to just, it, it wouldn't take but a few minutes to say, here's a summary of the issues that were left on the table that you guys should still consider. Because maybe you possibly forgot about...
We do that all the time. We all, we do all the time. Staff, are there any outstanding issues? Do they follow all the issues?
Well, I didn't hear one of those before Villanova, nor did I hear one of those before this whole...
That's what I asked at the beginning. I said, are there any outstanding issues? I asked that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Dan Sherry, Governor Sirkel, I should say, Dan Sherry the elder, I won't say senior. I was sitting at home watching the meeting and two issues came up during the initial portion that warranted me coming in here tonight and talking for a couple of minutes. First, an observation. When the so-called apology constitutes 10% of a commissioner's remarks and the remaining 90% deal with such issues as helping out at his daughter's school, which is commendable by the way, very commendable, I think one has to question just how heartfelt the apology is. Of course, if any of you watched the privately televised Ethics Board meeting and saw how this commissioner's attorney treated citizens of this township, I think you could predict just how sincere that apology was going to be. The real reason I'm here are the comments that were made by one of the speakers during the first public comment phase, George Beatty. Now, I have skin in this game. My eldest son was the recipient of the comment and question. Mr. Beatty mentioned that he's the chair of the Democratic Party of Radnor Township, but I don't think he mentioned that the three commissioners that he was beatifying here tonight are all eligible for reelection this coming term. And I think they're all expected to run for reelection. If I'm wrong about that, I will...
I'm not running for reelection.
Okay, well then that's, is that the first that this has been put out there in the public arena?
I thought, with all your connections with your family, they would know everything happening in the township.
I do not.
No.
My, my circle is rather, is rather limited. So two out of the three are expected to run for public, or for the next election. But I don't believe that Mr. Beatty mentioned that in his comments. And if he didn't, and if my recollection is correct, so much for his transparency. But what I'm getting, or I'd like to get to is, he first criticizes a reporter, he doesn't criticize, he castigates a reporter for actually quoting and quoting verbatim what is said at public meetings, as that is somehow below the belt or gotcha-type comment or conduct. I couldn't believe it when I heard that.
I believe it.
But what really brought me here was that he mentioned not once and not twice, but three times the word jihad in addressing what he thinks is the conduct that has been directed at the three commissioners that he mentioned. And I Googled jihad before I came here. And in just about every definition, the first thing that comes up is the phrase "holy war." And folks, with all that's going on and what's gone on for centuries in the name of organized religion, and all that's going on in every part of the world involving violence and violence directed at all peoples, including Arabs and Muslims, with all that in mind, how can one liken jihad to the pursuit of public comment and the, and the use of remedies that are made available by statute and under the Radnor Code? It's outrageous. And I would hope that before you adjourn tonight, that at least one of you would say the use of the word jihad in that situation was outrageous. And what would really be appropriate and gratifying would be if those comments came from at least one of the three commissioners whom Mr. Beatty was defending up here tonight. Thank you.
Dan, that is really, that's really, I'm part of the public. That is an absolutely legitimate comment. And I, it was, it was really stunning when I heard him say that. And I don't know why he would use that term. What, what was the meaning of that? It is outrageous and Dan Sherry is absolutely correct, Dan Sherry the elder. And it was inappropriate. And what in the heck was that supposed to mean?
Dan Sherry Jr., Wayne, the younger, a little levity, particularly after that, that type of invective. To come before this board and, and use words repeatedly like jihad and bully is, is unusual. If we are to comment about comments that are made in public meetings, I'm just going to throw out a couple of terms that have come up in meetings and you all can comment as to whether you think it's bullying. I'll deck you right here.
That was not said at a meeting, sir. It never came up at a public meeting. It wasn't public record. So I don't know where you got that, it was at a public meeting.
It was not at a public meeting, okay. Well, not at a public meeting, but, but we'll, we'll, we'll state that there was the phrase, "I'll deck you right here."
Yeah, but you didn't hear the conversation before that.
Stop it.
You know? I mean, I'm not going to be interrupted by somebody who's not the parliamentarian. Shut up. Not at a public meeting. Punch him out. At a public meeting. Somebody shoot you. At a public meeting. Those are not comments that are made from this lectern or from members of the public. Those are comments made by members of this board. It's not a gotcha situation when John Nagel says, "From the dais, somebody shoot you." It's not a gotcha situation when John Nagel says, "From the dais, shut up." It's not a gotcha situation when John Nagel says, "Punch him out." People should be accountable for their own words. Now, the reason I wanted to speak at the end of this meeting is pursuant to a letter that you all received, at least you were CC'd on, written by Neil Morris. This letter is dated March 3rd, 2015. I trust you all read it. It's two paragraphs. Deliniates that the Ethics Board has closed the investigation of John Nagel. Before I read this paragraph, I would like to remind you what John Rice said at a televised meeting regarding the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board is not a judge. It's not a prosecution. It's not a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is a fact-finding body. Bear that in mind and also bear in mind that I never asked the Ethics Board for an opinion, ever. I wouldn't do that. I would not ask people like Lane Vines, Bud Hirsch, Martin Eldring, and Bill Spengler for an opinion. Let's read John Rice's words. "And you tell me, after I read them, whether that sounds like to you like a court or whether a fact-finding body. The Board's determination to close the inquiry is based upon the requirements of the township's Home Rule Charter, the legislative authority for any actions commenced under the Ethics Code. Charter Section 9.04 prohibited activities and 9.05 conflicts of interest constitute the exclusive criteria for the regulation of unethical conduct under the Charter and the Ethics Code." You all read that. Again, does that sound like fact-finding to you or does that sound like a court to you? Put it aside for a second. Put that aside. What did John Rice state in that letter? Only 9.04 and non-9.05 under the Code can be the subject of an ethics complaint. How coincidental. Only three scant days before John Rice directed that letter to me, what happened at a Board of Commissioners meeting? You were all here. There was a rather detailed discussion about a certain other provision of Radnor's Charter, which reads as follows. Administrative policy. It is the intent of this Charter that the Board act as a body in relation to all township matters. No commissioner acting individually shall seek publicly or privately to direct the acts of township officials and employees. Know what section that is? Here's a hint, it's not 9.04. It's not 9.05. It's Section 2.09H. So what do we have? All of a sudden, we have an opinion from the Ethics Board, provisions like that, which by the way, directly impact Mr. Rice, the township official who was directed to act, are suddenly off the table for Ethics Board investigations. Did you all know that the Ethics Board was taking that, that, that opinion? That 2.09H is no longer a topic despite the express prohibition therein about directing staff? That that no longer can be an ethics complaint? Does anybody know that?
Mr. Sherry, can you get to your point because your time is over already, so I would like to get to a point.
Appears the Commissioner Spengler does not understand my point.
Yeah, why don't you get to it?
I would imagine that the other people on this board do understand it and understand the implications as to what John Rice and the Ethics Board have done. This again is an advisory board that now not only views itself apparently as a court, but has now taken Radnor's Charter and Code and limited it to prevent any ethics investigations of any other infractions pursuant to the plain language of the Charter. It's an extraordinary development. Again, this board is the entity that is supposed to adjudicate conduct. Now, given the fact that Mr. Rice sent this letter a week ago, it's disconcerting that while this had presumably the ability to get onto an agenda, it was not discussed. I would suggest, and I'll bring it up at the next Board of Commissioners meeting as well, that you all closely evaluate the language in that letter. Because moving forward, this township needs to know exactly what provisions of the Charter this board, either ratifying or distancing itself from John Rice's letter, considers to be an ethical issue. I would state that my complaint against John Nagel for the "somebody shoot you" outburst was specifically predicated on 39-2.
Yeah. We understand all that. Could you please wrap up?
Which is responsibilities of public officials and the express language therein. Thank you if you give me a little bit more time, I understand.
No, I'm not giving you a little more time because we've heard all this be over and over again. This is like the fifth time I've heard this.
You've heard about the John Rice letter beforehand?
No.
That's very interesting.
Let's go. Wrap up, please.
The specific, I'm sorry...
You're abusing, you're abusing your time. It's not fair. We've been, it's 11:08 and you've been, you've been talking for eight minutes. So please wrap up in the next minute.
Eight minutes. Had you introduced the motion to stop conversation as to the new biomed plan, it would be 9:09 now. The specific language, "Their conduct in both their official and private affairs should and private affairs should be above reproach according to the Ethics Board, no longer subject to any ethics investigation." We'll have more of a discussion at the next Board of Commissioners meeting again regarding that. But be advised, this is what the Ethics Board is seeking to do. Unlike the Planning Commission, which recommended rejection of biomed, here you have an Ethics Board not merely looking at the issue before it, but forever attempting to constrain other individuals in Radnor Township from bringing to their attention any alleged infraction of the Charter and the Code, other than the two limited sections set forth by John Rice in his letter. It's untenable. It's inappropriate. It's completely contrary to what an advisory board should do, and it is sadly par for the course. Please discuss it at next Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Pass the seven to zero.